Recording in progress.
Good afternoon. We have a short in our group here. We have a couple of people missing short term, which should be coming in and out. But I think in the respecting our time, let's get started here and I'll turn over the agenda to City Administrator Zels.
Thank you, Mr. King. We do have a kickoff item of an update from the Downtown Task Force and that will primarily be provided by Deputy City Administrator Steinhauser and I believe Jamie Rothie from Destination Medical Center. So take it away. We did have a slight change. There's a little bit of a difference to what was in your packet in the presentation. We tweaked a couple of things this morning, so just to be aware.
Happy to present the annual update for the Downtown Task Force. We've been on this journey just over a year ago. The partners that we work with in economic development convened to help talk through what do we need to do to continue to thrive post COVID? And so we're excited to be able to give you a one-year report. So again, just a reminder here, all the partners who were involved in that work, I think almost all of them are represented here today. But leading this work, helping shepherd us through this effort is Jamie Rothie from Destination Medical Center, who really helped bring the group together, continue to hold us accountable in terms of what we achieved in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, six months, 12 months, a year. So I'm going to let Jamie kind of give you a little bit of the background as a reminder of why we were here, what the purpose of the task force was for. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've accomplished and then we're going to talk about what's ahead.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Thank you for taking time to talk about the task force today. So we wanted just to build some context and some background and remind ourselves a year ago why we came together to do this work. Really out in the community, we were getting feedback from stakeholders in downtown and businesses downtown about challenges that they were having after COVID, still not really knowing some of the long-term changes, but they were coming to each of our organizations. And what we found is oftentimes one organization couldn't solve for that challenge, whether someone came about a parking question or a permit question, or there was something else that was going on. We really felt that we needed to figure out how we could come together to solve for those questions that we were hearing from the stakeholders and the businesses. We also knew that there was a lot of things that were changing and happening around us, an environment where we thought we started to see some patterns. Remember, we saw people changing their buying patterns, changing the way in which they were coming downtown. But those things together were causing some challenges. And so we wanted to figure out a way how we could all come together as the organizations that serve downtown and really build a plan where we were listening and building a plan with the community to solve for those challenges. So our purpose was to identify immediate and short-term action items while considering long-term needs at the same time. So we didn't want to keep those out of sight, but we knew that we needed to figure out a way to solve really quickly for immediate challenges that were happening in our downtown. We wanted to identify the responsible partners. We heard from some of our stakeholders and businesses downtown of, I don't know who's in charge of this, or who answers this, or who will solve for this. And so we really wanted to show visibly that we were working together, but then also identify who could make the changes and what challenge were happening and how do we move forward. We also wanted to make sure that we were building a timeline that was responsive to the challenges. So sometimes we hear, boy, I shared this information, but I'm not getting any follow-up. So we wanted to build a plan that was had focused on communication back with the stakeholders in a consistent way and continue to evolve as we went forward and continue to keep everybody connected. And then we wanted accountability plan, so making sure that we were very focused on communicating what our actions were and how we were moving forward. We came in and touched base with this organization, with other boards as well, and making sure that everybody felt connected to the work that we were doing. This also, part of the framework included how we worked together. So pretty much for the last year, for the entire year, we met twice a month to work on this work together and then go off and do our work with our own organizations as well. A few things that we wanted to call out that I opened with is that this is kind of a frame of mind that we used when we started and continues to evolve, but really has a lot of meaning still today, is that we think about downtowns are no longer obligations, they're destinations. In the pre-COVID world, people were required to come downtown every single day, pretty set times. We could set, we could depend on those times. And businesses built plans around that, our programming, our activation, our policies were built around that. And now that we know this, we might not have all the details, but we can take this information and start to look at how do we build new policy or new program, new marketing, new activation around that. And so it's a lens in which we need to think about the work that we do and all that we do when we focus on downtown. We know that the workforce has shifted to hybrid, but even from a year ago to today, hybrid means something completely different. We're seeing some required times, we're seeing flexibility on the edges, we're seeing people not spend money during lunch, but spending a lot of money during happy hour. Maybe it's stressful times, I do not know. But we're starting to see these trends and we have data in which we can look at these things to better understand how we should be responding to those. We know that people are willing to come downtown on the evenings and weekends, much more than they were willing to come down when they were coming down Monday through Friday. So these are all things, again, that we want to be thinking about and continuing to learn about as we think about how we're responding to the kind of the lasting impacts of the pandemic and how downtowns are shifting. So we might recall, we went through a rapid engagement strategy where we held on multiple different input sessions and report out sessions. We held them at Faken Studios, we held them at Piscals Pizza, we held them at the Chateau Theatre. I know many of you participated in them, where we went through kind of a design facilitated process, so we could listen and report back what we were hearing and continue to define those and clarify those. And you might recall, these are the four main themes that we heard, which is promotion, activation, and programming of our downtown, access to downtown, barriers to doing business, and downtown growth. And underneath each of these, there was a number of different subsets where we took our work and we started moving forward. So I'll invite Cindy back up to share the activation or the action plan out of each of these.
Great. Thanks, Jamie. So really excited when we reflect and think about what's happened in a year's time and really how we came together as partners. Truly, the beauty of collaboration and partnership shown through, right? Building those relationships across our organizations, having this shared vision and alignment around what we need to do to create a more vibrant downtown and one that thrives coming out of COVID. As we reflect on what's happened, there's really been a lot in a year's time. And so under the, and this is a slide that's slightly different from what you received in your packet, because there were other things that we had to add that had, I had missed actually before the seminal deadline. So the promotion, activation, and programming, again, really thinking about how we promote and market and communicate all the things that there are to do in downtown and to build on that programming. And so, you know, leaning into this space very aggressively are our partners at RDA, DMC, Experience Rochester, and of course, city teammates that play a crucial role in this. So RDA has seen their marketing increase, they have, they did a really aggressive holiday campaign, really marketing downtown Rochester as a foodie destination, understanding the patterns in which people are coming to and from downtown and it's really food-driven as being a really a niche market they can tap into. And so really aligning that marketing and budget around that, really focusing how do we activate spaces where you have made significant investment like Peace Plaza. And so we're seeing music every Sunday through Wednesday in the evening, we're seeing it daily, Monday through Friday, we're seeing things like Play in the Plaza on Saturday morning, the kinds of things that bring families of all shapes and sizes down to experience these, the really great third spaces. We have seen increased usage in the Chateau Theatre and the program that happens there. Contractually, they're required to have a certain number of days open and despite types of events. And we're really pleased with the numbers that we've been continuing to see from Threshold Arts as they manage that space. Experience Rochester has really, convention business has bounced back for Rochester. And here are just two examples of the business that they've been able to book. One, the International Symposium, I'm not going to try and say that word, but people coming from 50 different countries, right? Again, Rochester's exposure internationally is really powerful and translated in those kinds of events, as well as the Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association, their national convention bringing 3,000 people to downtown, and what an opportunity that presents. And then, of course, some really exciting news, Discovery Walk, again, another really great third space that you've invested in, going to see a midweek farmers' market. So when we think about creating great spaces, creating the kind of programming alignment with how people have access to healthy local food, something like farmers, midweek farmers' market really helps to check all the boxes. When we think about access to downtown, again, this particular activity talked about improved public parking, downtown wayfinding and navigation, it talked about safety and mitigating the impacts of construction. Lots of work, again, I would say the city's really leaned into this space, but our partners have informed it. I won't go through every single thing, but you can see the themes in terms of improving security, not only in the ramps, but also in the downtown area. One thing I'll call out, a rapid response to an issue, a downtown business identified pedestrian lighting and some frustration with their replacement pedestrian lighting that they felt impacted their business. We have now instituted a weekly assessment. We are actively going out in the downtown area, looking at the pad light poles, are they lit, is it providing the kind of illumination and assessment that can, if not, that can help inform future investments, but making sure we don't have what I, you know, lightbulbs missing. It's that broken window syndrome that people, we refer to in local government that can lead people to think about a space a certain way. So that was one where we quickly pivoted in a matter of a day, that we implemented, a day or two implemented this weekly assessment. Of course, the investment partnership with Mayo for the downtown police substation, going to continue to have a really great presence. Your investment in additional staffing, whether it's for the outreach position for homelessness, your investment in additional patrol for bringing those SRO officers, school resource officers to the downtown area over the summer season, your investment in BRT, your funding for a nighttime overflow shelter as needed, all of those things send the message to our partners and to our downtown businesses that you are serious about downtown's thriving coming out of COVID and sends a message to the community that this is a really great place to come down and experience some of the very best that Rochester has to offer. In terms of barriers to doing business, again, really leans onto the city into doing this. And I have hats off to the Clerk's Office who really carried this task and understood, you know, we do the certain business improvement, business licensing processes, and through an analysis understood that, hey, some of these things already come to City Council for approval, so we can speed up and we can reduce the time that it takes to turn licenses around by implementing the administrative approval component into it, rather than having bring it back to City Council two, three, four times. And so that was, that was something that you approved earlier this year. Of course, the Historic District Incentive Program, a partnership not only between the city, but between DMC directing specific dollars in response to what we heard coming out of the property owners and businesses in the Historic District. And again, that's one where Jamie Roth from DMC, along with Irene Woodward and Josh Johnson and the city team, have really leaned into that space and that material. And that program should be launching in July. So really excited to, for that work to be stood up. And then downtown growth. You will see that, again, this was focused on the retention of small business and collaborating on the recruitment of new businesses. Part of that is telling our story and telling it well. I'm often reminded that living in the Midwest, we don't, we don't like to brag because it doesn't feel comfortable, it doesn't feel natural. But if we're not going to do it, no one else will do it. So we, we have to tell our story and we have to tell it in a better way. So Bill Von Bank, really great opportunity, he leaned into that and got struck up a conversation with Twin City Businesses. What you have in front of you is the result of that conversation a few months ago. Quickly, the community came together, the downtown community came together to sponsor that publication, and it has a specific call-out section on Rochester. And I love the, I love the language that they use, Rochester Rising. It really talks about the spirit of growth and partnership and collaboration that's happening in Rochester. And some really great investment from downtown businesses to make that feature come to light. So thanks to Experience Rochester and particularly Bill Von Bank for helping to organize that. And then, of course, again, through these stakeholder interceptor surveys and feedback that came through the Downtown Task Force process, DMC has invested in a recruitment strategy, have brought on a consultant to help guide that retail dining recruitment strategy, which goes really nicely and marries really well with what we understand. Go back to the beginning, RDA talking about creating that niche market of downtown as a foodie, those fit really nicely when you think about parallel initiatives around the Downtown Task Force and the work that we're doing. But where does this leave us for what, what's in front of us, right? We, we know this community is undergoing a transformation. And so how do we think about as partners and as policy decision makers, think about what's next for downtown in terms of managing through this transformation, managing through the construction that's going to happen over the next number of years and what that means for our collaborative, our collaborative of the Downtown Task Force. And I think, Jamie, you're going to come back up and talk a little bit about Downtown Task Force 2.0, right?
Thank you. Yes. So we'll continue to take our lessons learned from this last year and think about how we can move those forward. I think Cindy mentioned, it's a new way of working, having these organizations come together twice a month to solve for problems that were not only identified through the task force, but other things that came up in the community. We were able to quickly communicate with stakeholders and get back to the main answer and decide if we can take action on them. We are already thinking about the future. We know that we're going through a ton of transformation and we want to understand how we can thrive during that transformation. So using this framework to begin to look at what does the next five, six years look like with all the construction that's happening, and how do we build a plan together to respond to that and proactively work towards an active downtown during construction. So that's something that we're looking forward to. We want to continue to look at development of downtown as a destination. So again, thinking about how people are using downtowns differently, what are we learning from data? And then how do we continue to work on our strategies together to answer for that and continue to watch how downtowns are changing? Of course, there's a lot of things coming up also that we're working together on renewal, the Special Service District with our Rochester Downtown Alliance Partner and helping and answering questions along that path. Wayfinding continues to come up in conversations, so we want to be thinking actively about what does that look like during the interim, during construction, but then also long-term, 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 when construction is done. As well as an ambassador program of looking at, we used to have ambassador programs that, if you might recall, with the green vests, that people were around everywhere during COVID, that sort of went away. We're recognizing that there's new needs for that moving forward. And so what can we learn from our past program? What do we have today? And how can we look at new tools that we need in the future?
Thank you, Jamie. So that concludes our presentation of the Downtown Task Force. I think as you, hopefully we've indicated, there's been a real spirit of collaboration across these partners. There's a convergence of our differing needs as organizations and being responsive to not only the organizational needs, the needs that come from the downtown businesses and property owners who have invested, some have been here for decades, there are anchor institutions, some are new and we want to lift them up and be successful. And as Jamie said, was we talked about downtown as a destination and what does that look and feel like? And how do we all own that as a responsibility to our community? So I think with that, we'll pause. Happy to take questions from the council.
Well, thank you so much. Sorry, I was notified of my presidency position at 2:00 today. So sorry about the late arrival. But so this is wonderful. I just attended a downtown meeting this morning, which was wonderful, talked to a business owner about some of the challenges. And I know there is a lot of challenges and, and things that are barriers for downtown business. So, but I'll just open up to questions real quick. So wonderful. Oh, Councilmember Wall?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Is there a timeline?
Is there a timeline for attraction of retail back to downtown?
So I would say that two pieces. I think what we're trying to understand, at a most recent, I think, DMC update, one of our team members, Mike Flynn, provided an update regarding both our recruitment strategies for med tech, life science, and then this new arm of retail entertainment dining. Krueger and Associates is the firm that we're working with, has been actively involved on that. He's actively meeting with business owners, property owners in the area. And then he's serving as a representative when he's out doing that work. We're looking at current spaces that are open, future spaces that are open. So it's an active process, both big and small. So it's something that is happening every single day. And we're trying to look at some different priority areas that we know that have some openings, like there's some areas in the Historic District, for example, that we know are standing up other services around. So we'll just continue to work on it. So there's not a set timeline, but it's part of our work plan and it's part of our everyday work that we do on our team.
So I hear there's a strategy, but it's difficult to put a timeline on the recruitment of specific businesses.
Yes, because there's a lot of different factors that go into it. It's not only, you know, what spaces are available and what their capabilities are. It is also how motivated an organization might be. You know, Lee Krueger is actively working with a number of different organizations up in the city. And sometimes the timing is right and sometimes the timing is wrong. What we do know is that there's a lot of interests and possibilities with companies that are already established in the Twin Cities that are coming down here. It's more along the lines of making sure that they're familiar, that they have the relationships that they need, and that either we're on their kind of, if you want to say, their own business plans, either for short-term or for long-term, because that's what we're working with as well. There's some that are available right now, but then we also know there's developments that will be ready in three and four years. So how are we making sure that kind of all of that is in our plan and that we're working that plan?
Thank you.
You're right. Thank you for that. I know there's so many amazing things that are happening downtown and various, but I'll have some, I have some comments myself, but I want to reach out to Councilmember Keane, who has a few more questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you headed off my first one here, just with the idea of a task force. This is feeling more operational. Can you talk about 2.0 and this is an ongoing thing, or this is something that's going to live until it shouldn't?
So I'd say it's a piece of both. I think that there are, we've learned a number of things. We've learned that it's very important for our organizations to work together and we want to keep the way that we're working together. We came together under the task force with the role to respond to the impact of COVID because our stakeholders are saying, there are things in place that are making us difficult to do our work downtown. So we wanted to respond to that. So we're addressing those and have addressed those. What we're finding is that there are current needs that are coming up that we still need to respond to and work towards. So that's what we're looking at now, is like, what does this look like operationally? But we also know that there's work coming up in the future, which is thriving during transformation. We have a considerable amount of growth that's going to be happening, and we know that all of our organizations need to be a part of that. So we're just starting to look at how do we get organized around that? And is it another action plan? Is it the way that we operate? We're kind of working through what that looks like.
Okay. And, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say something that not only, what Jamie responded to that, your question just now, but your question earlier, understanding data too, and the importance of data informing what does our work going forward look like, right? What are patterns? Where do we see opportunities in terms of whether it's sites or locations, where's foot traffic happening? And because all that feeds into decision-making, whether it's someone decides to expand, relocate, come to Rochester. And so being, what was really important was putting together the partnership DNA, right, so that we could respond to something. And as Jamie said, some of it gets operationalized and some of it is, we know that there is a beginning and end to some of this work because it's for this moment in time, like construction mitigation, for example. But that we, that we are nimble enough to be able to come together to be able to react quickly and efficiently.
Thank you. So, I mean, again, there are different sort of, like you say, operational, near-term, and then there's more strategic things. You bring up an interesting point, though, when you start talking about data, that I still have a mental model that these are, you know, the people coming to the table, some are bringing up issues and some are catching them and seeing what they can do about them. That's kind of just how it view, how it feels to me. But when you start talking about data, you start getting into this idea of like, is there a concept of metrics of what it means to have a vibrant downtown? Or is it, that's a, that's a moving target and we will change those from time to time? Or are we working towards something like that? Is there things we're doing that we shouldn't be doing?
You know, I think for every community, it's different. I will tell you, some of the standard stuff is, you know, what does your first floor vacancy look like? What does your second floor vacancy look like? How many housing units do you have in downtown? What kind of 24/7 operation does your downtown have that creates that nightlife and vitality? What kind of exodus of inflow and export of people moving in and out of downtown? Like, all of those are your typical measures and that, while we haven't done a deep dive into those, certainly those are the things that you look at when you say, what's, what's, what does it mean to have a thriving downtown? But that's, those are very quantitative. There's also qualitative, right? People's, people's perception about how they feel when they experience a really great place. Like, hey, I was at Thursday's downtown and I experienced this really beautiful, you know, in Heart of the City, and I got to, you know, go and walk Discovery Walk and see some great artwork. And, you know, that kind of retention of people in your community and your ability to grow as a community, those are some of the qualitative measures, I think, that communities also look for. I don't know, Jamie, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, I would just add that when the DMC initiative first started, there was two things that we identified that needed to be built into the work that we do. One was this gap in financing and one was this experience gap. And that was the first time that we really measured people's perceptions of their experience in our downtown. You might recall, there's a slide that kind of shows community perceptions and our visitor perceptions and their satisfaction of what was happening in our downtown. We plan in our 10-year update for DMC to revisit that, to look at, to see where are we at now, and then how can we start to measure for the next 10 years as well? So we want to figure out what the right metrics are. So that's high level broad. With each project that we do, there are experience metrics that are built into the projects as well and that we can study and look at. So for example, with Heart of the City, you might recall, we did a post-occupancy analysis to understand, did it meet the goals of the project? Is it creating a stickiness factor? Are people spending more time or different people coming into the space? So there's measurements within the projects as well.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. I, I think of the task force, again, what it was, what it's becoming, but I also want to get a better feel. We're doing things like we've discussed wayfinding and improvements we need to make and kind of like how parking is used and if it's used well enough. And then there's things like our link that's going to be a major thing. How much of that is strategic and going to be happening with or without this task force? Or how much of it, how many things are informed through this sort of partnership of these seven groups?
Yeah, that's a really great question. I think part of the beauty of the task force and of any kind of group that forms like that is you, 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 it's like that storming, norming, performing, right? That an issue comes to light, we go, oh, now we have to do this. And how do we respond to it? So in the case of, when you say BRT, when we understand, how do we move people through the downtown? We know we've got a project coming forward. So the work that the Downtown Task Force is doing, when they're doing this outreach, when they're doing these, what I call business interceptor surveys and saying like, you know, where are my employees going to park? Or how do I get customers through my front door? How do we, how do they navigate through the downtown, right? That's helping us, that informs whether it's micro-transit decisions that we might make, how we need to provide information around BRT as an operation and make them, help them be able to share with their employees or customers, here's all the transit options that you have if you're worried about how, where do I park and how do I navigate? So I would say that the input that the Downtown Task Force gets, for example, we, I share that with our team, right? And then that translates into projects that come forward that align with your strategic priorities, align with what we're hearing from the community as a need. And that's really the beauty of local government is when you can marry those two things. And then when you have partners that come along that help you achieve some of those things. So really, the Downtown Task Force, I think, is a, is a vehicle for us to, as at least in local government, be able to say, okay, here's what they heard of the Downtown Task Force. How does that translate into a project? Like the SROs coming to doing patrol in downtown in the summer, right? That's a perfect example of how you take feedback from this initiative and translate it into something actionable in your organization. I would say each of the partners did the same thing. Through the Downtown Task Force, heard a lot about promotion and programming of downtown, and you saw the slide and how, you know, Experience Rochester, RDA, DMC, all like jumped on board to fill that need. And that lives in their organization. It doesn't live in the task force, it lives in their organization. But it was a task force that brought that together.
Last, last point I want to try to make, that when I was going through this, it definitely had the feel from the task force, it was the business, it was the COVID impacts, and that's how these things were staffed and brought together. But over time, we're getting a lot more people living downtown. And I'm not seeing a reflection here of the resident in the task force. The people who, five years from now, will have another, hopefully, a couple of, maybe a thousand new addresses downtown. Are they being integrated into what is this like, this, this model of how the city works? Are they being, becoming part of what RDA is? Are they, is that, is that happening or is that not happening?
So I think that's actually a really good question for us to say. What does, where does our next focus need to be? Again, we were responding to businesses impacted, downtown businesses impacted by COVID. So we really leaned into the actions that came out of those stakeholder meetings with downtown businesses impacted by COVID. So I would say there's a lot of, a lot of things that we're already doing that really help enhance the resident experience downtown. But it's a good question maybe for us to ask ourselves as the Downtown Task Force. But it's a good question maybe for us to ask ourselves as the downtown task force. Is that what we need to lean into or do we need to lean into managing through construction or both? What, what does it look like?
I don't know. If I could just share, I do think you're seeing some of that. So if anyone went to the annual meeting for Experience Rochester, that was part of their, the focus is that, you know, that's a great place to visit. Or you start with a visit and then it becomes like the idea of where you live because all of those things are complementary to either having new business, new jobs, new resident, repeat visitor, et cetera. And so I would just say we did invite and specifically go to the different apartment complexes to try to encourage people who are already downtown to come out and be a part of that. And also some of those promotional activities are to get to people to, not even just downtown residents, but where there's not as many right now as there will be in the future. But to get residents of Rochester thinking about, you know, take a day in downtown. Like, there's a lot to do here and there's a lot of opportunity. So that has been some of the thought process. And having more downtown living is critical to some of the retail and activation work that the RDA and DMC are really coming together on and trying to activate the spaces with new retail and commercial. So that you kind of need both, like it's a chicken and the egg a little bit. So a lot of that has come up, just less in the sense of like, what do we do now? But we know we need that downtown resident in order to fill some of, just to have more activity, which will influence how safe it feels downtown if there's more people, those kinds of things.
Good. So I'm glad to get the update today. My, I always have these ongoing concerns that I think there is something unique about being in the city center. We've got these major initiatives going on over the next five to seven years. At the same time, businesses and individuals make choices to live downtown or to live in a neighborhood or to set up a business in a, in the outskirts because of the benefits it gets. But also because of the, you know, they, they have their own foot traffic problems. And I, I, I want to make sure we're showing equity between where the different businesses decide and where the different residents decide. And we're not just focusing our city resources inordinately into the downtown.
All right. But I know there's some questions in order from Bransford, Palmer and Norton following. But I wanted to just throw in too, because my, my thoughts are that there, you know, definitely that there's work being done and that's wonderful. The issues that have been brought up by constituents, in my word, are affordability, things to do like that are affordable downtown. Not just an event, because I know the Civic Center does great events, there's wonderful events happening, brings people. But, you know, the actual destination is, is something that I think perception is not always taken as seriously. Perception is reality. And so what, I'll pass it on here because President Carlson just arrived. But I just wanted to, what I have heard from residents is that the issue a lot is there's less people working downtown, less male employees. And the cost of property is still expensive. So I have brought up in other council meetings where like the Wells Fargo building, for example, or different places where there is available, you know, activation. But businesses that have a lot of money are able to come in and, and take those properties instead of maybe mom pop kind of places. So those are the kind of, accessible parking. I know there's been a lot of talk about there is parking, but accessible parking is so vital to have downtown. So those are the big issues that I have heard, accessible parking, obviously less people working downtown. So there's less commerce during the workday and the cost of property. So people are trying to have a business where, you know, their, their, you know, finances are competing with millions or billions of dollars. So those are some of the barriers that I have heard, which is hard for a task force to overcome, you know. So I just wanted to throw that out because I know there's a lot of wonderful thoughts and wonderful, wonderful passion that's happening. But I also do, I do want to make sure that people know that the barriers, people don't go downtown. I know people in my word have reached out because of the parking, because of their, on Sunday afternoon, let's go out to eat Sunday afternoon. And they're like, it's open, you know, like it's really hard. And what I learned this morning when going to this event at a business downtown, we took a tour of downtown this morning. And we looked at like, to have a business open, a business open, a business open, to wayfind from an event to downtown. We need to have each storefront having vibrancy and that's a huge obstacle. So I just wanted to say I appreciate Walls, Councilmember Walls' idea about a timeline. I think that's important. Implementation, how we are implementing this plan is so important so that we don't just have these study sessions, talk, 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 that we actually have, like, we are going to by this date have this many businesses that we're going to make sure we contact. We, we engage this many residents and find the barriers. Because I just been here nearly four years and I know the pandemic is an issue. But there's a lot of deeper issues that I think needs to be addressed to see if we can have the downtown that we want to. So I'm going to pass it on to Councilmember Bransford for questions and then followed by Councilmember Palmer and Mayor Norton. So, thank you.
And I think while we're, Council President Carlson is here, will we, if I might just provide some clarification. I will say, I think Council President Carlson is here.
Yes, absolutely.
That I think something that Jamie alluded to earlier in terms of promotion, activation, programming. We are seeing the downtown employees come back. It's just how they use their time differently, right? Or maybe we saw more noon business, may, there's actually converting that maybe more to the happy hour and staying longer and spending more. I do want to point to this slide, which does list a number of, there's a lot of free activities that you can do in downtown, whether it's passively or actual program activities, all the Peace Plaza programming. Almost 55% of the days and the programming at Chateau Theater is free and open to the public. So I would encourage those listening to go to our partners' websites to understand what's available and including what's available for parking. But there's a lot of free parking, a lot of parking capacity, not, not only nights, weekends. So I would say that perhaps it's just us working, continuing to work to get good information out about all the free events that you can experience in downtown and the parking that is available. And so Councilmember Bransford, thank you for letting me just clarify.
It's all good. Speaking of parking, and I'm going to give a shout out to a very specific business townies downtown in the Soldiers Field area. Speaking of parking, parking is going to be an issue with the new aquatic center. They're really struggling to get business because of the lack of parking. And I know the golf community is having an issue with parking as well. So I'm not necessarily looking for a solution or an answer or anything like that. I'm just kind of giving a shout out to is, this is going to continue to be an issue as well in and around the downtown. I mean, that's a very important nexus now of businesses, golf, swimming, which is a draw to downtown. And so I'm hoping, you know, the RDA or some folks will reach out to Cody and just help him figure out a solution there a little bit because it's a very specific example of retaining a business, which I think is important. Because it serves both the aquatic center and the golfing community too.
I would agree. And just, I sit on the Soldiers Field work group. So we are studying the parking habits. We studied before the pool opened and after, so we can understand the changes. There's team members from the city parks team that are in the parking lot doing observation studies at the time. Trying to understand how families are using it for drop off and pickup, what lots are being used, what lots are not being used. Also, I believe, I don't, I don't know if you talked to townies, but I know there's been some conversations. I was just golfing last week there and in talking with the owners or the staff as well. So everybody, I think, you bring up a good point, is talking about like, what is the new use of this parking lot? And how can we best make some adjustments to it and how do we communicate about how to use that parking spot as well?
And I would just add to that, I know the team working in Soldiers Field and the Aquatic Center made, you know, we have business for it as one of our strategies and that lives and breathes across all of our projects now, right? It's been, it's been proven to be very effective when we've used on other projects. We took that approach also with Soldiers Field. We intend to carry that initiative forward because it does get to that point. It's easier to retain in a business than it is to try and fill an empty storefront after one's left.
Looks like we have Councilmember Palmer next.
Thank you. I like our friendly parking, trying to do something with that. And we need to come back with some kind of other things that the city can do on that. And then wayfinding to me is, I just keep hearing about, I just want us to, to get it done. But I do have a request to the task force and maybe they can help us with a vision. We talk about Sixth Street Bridge going in Civic Center Drive being rebuilt. But in between those two areas, how can we get it down to one lane on traffic and get it so it's not a cavern to walk across or four lanes? But so maybe the task force can look at some suggestions on how we can, we can achieve doing that and what the benefit is of narrowing that, that crossing. So that'd be one ask of the task force.
I was writing, what crossing are you talking about?
Broadway?
Oh, Broadway, yes.
The big road that?
Yeah, yeah, Broadway. I, I didn't want to presume, but we actually, we have had a lot of conversation. There's a convergence of different groups thinking about this, right? How, how do we solve for it for development that's happening along there? How do we solve for it with the UMR campus growth, the historic district? That was a lot of feedback that we got through the historic district property owner discussion. We know that we're going to have to do, make some adjustments as streets close and we rely. So actually, we're working with the Public Works team to, what can we do to prototype and study a narrower Broadway? And what is the impact? Because it is a primary route, right? It is also in our PTN network. It is primary transit network. It is a future bus route. But there is a lot of energy and enthusiasm around what, what, what would be the impact of narrowing Broadway? So it is, it is an active conversation about how to study that and maybe prototype some to understand that impact. So you'll be seeing something come forward.
I guess I'm asking that the task force get involved with doing that so that they can come to suggestions. So it's not just truck drivers who are saying, this is what I want through Broadway. So as an example. So, thank you.
Good thought. Mayor Norton?
Thank you. Some of the things have been covered that I, that I wanted to mention. I just really think as we consider why we would continue going forward with this group that's been really instrumental in addressing some of the, the problems that have occurred over the last few years since we started this during the pandemic is with our unprecedented growth that'll be happening downtown. And it will impact traffic. It will impact pedestrians. It will impact businesses. And this group can help assure that we're addressing them as quickly as we can because we meet regularly and really reach out to the people affected proactively to get that input that we need to, rather than just waiting for a problem to occur. So I think it's important that we continue this group for another year and I, I hope others do too. I did want to say a couple of things, that the liveliness, RDA works, you know, with us as part of the group. But the liveliness of our downtown spaces has been instrumental in getting some of our groups here. And I'm just going to use the example of the Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association, of which over 3,000 motorcyclists were in town this past week. They were delightful. And they came two years ago to meet with me, we, you know, the convention center met with them. They went downtown. They, they witnessed firsthand Thursday's downtown. And they were like, wow, we want this on Friday. And we said, well, two days in a row probably is more than RDA wanted to tackle. So actually, they sort of broadened the time that they suggested people come. And so people came ahead. There were thousands of them in attendance that evening. And they stayed and spent money in our downtown businesses and visited and it was wonderful. So the livelihood that we're creating for our own community also has benefit to the groups that we want to attract here when they, they learn about it. And I'm actually very excited, weather please hold, for League of Minnesota Cities, when they're here this week, to see, many of whom have never been to Rochester. They're going to see our community and also the vibrancy of our community because of the work that we've been doing. And so two things have come up that I just want to make you aware of that we might want to address. One, we continued and we had a meeting earlier about parking and that we're going to start advertising more of our flat parking and where people can park. Because continuing to, to say there's no parking is detrimental to our downtown businesses. It should not be repeated. Instead, what should be repeated is here are the ways that you can park. Here's where, when you can park. It's free, you know, a good part of the time to sell the positives and quit repeating the negatives, many of which aren't even true. So I want to do that, but also this farmer's market that we've heard about. I've had three people in the last 24 hours say, what's Discovery Walk? Where's Discovery, you know, what's Discovery Square? People, so we're, we're saying, come, come downtown, go to Discovery Walk. People don't yet know. Those of us on the inside do, those of them in the task force do. The community does not yet understand what that is. So we have to be very specific about, that's the area between here and here, right? And come on down and you can park here for free or whatever. So to, to really help them understand, because it's kind of an inside description at this point until people really get to know it. Also, the other comment I've heard has been about the policing, the additional policing has been noted downtown. And part of that is as a result of the conversations we've had here. I've had one business saying, what's wrong? We suddenly have all these police downtown. I said, there's nothing wrong. They're there because the businesses asked for them and they did. And that's been part of our response. So I just wanted to know, it's being noticed. And I think, I think most of the other issues have been discussed. I, Councilmember Keen mentioned a couple of things and Councilmember Bransford that I had on my list. So I just, I just really wanted to reiterate that continuing to work together rather, you know, I hope there isn't a feeling that that needs to be justified, given what we're facing.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you to all the partners and the folks that have come together to do this. You all are the talented ones. You all are the ones with the skillset to go ahead and bring this back and make this happen. Downtown is very special to me. Anytime I've lived in Rochester, most of my life, off and on, I've always been downtown or in one of the core neighborhoods. I can't stand going out to the suburbs. So, no, it's just, yeah. So Mr. Keen, Bransford and Wall all said, just don't even take me north of Silver Lake Drive or south of the Belt Line. It's just way too far to go. But anyway, they all asked the questions that I wanted to ask so that, that rich mixed methods research, data gathering that you're doing of both quantitative and qualitative, to give it a timeline, to hold yourselves accountable to where we can go and to get people down there. The parking, absolutely. There is always tons of parking downtown. I never have a hard time finding parking at all, ever. And just so thank you to all of the folks that are on board here, making this come together because our downtown is so special. And I want to see it get back more vibrant than it ever was. And so just thank you for your time on this and I really want this to continue.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Well, thank you, team. Sorry I missed the beginning, but.
Thank you.
I should just put one last plug. This is at yours and it's also available to the public. We have lots of these. You want to send them to people as a recruitment strategy. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Cindy. All right. I will turn it back over to Allison Zales to introduce the next item.
Certainly, I actually think that Brian Anderson, Finance Director, is going to be coming up to introduce Jason from Smith Schaefer. Just another opportunity for Brian to be at the council meeting.
Well, thank you. This evening we have with us Jason Boyd from Smith Schaefer. He does our annual audit. And he will present the findings of that audit. And with that too, I'd also at this time, if I'm going to remember, but to thank our wonderful staff for the great job they've done for the last six months in doing the 2023 audit and getting all the financial papers together too. And with us this evening, we have Rachel Horek and then Jill Harris with us too, who have overseen the process. So a great thanks to them. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jason to come up and present. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Council President Carlson, members of the council, Mayor Norton. Pleased to be with you this afternoon to go over the results of the audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended December 31, 2023. Pleased to report to the council that we are issuing an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. A lot of people refer to that as a clean opinion. It just means that we think that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. A reminder to council that we perform what we call a group audit. Essentially what that means is that our firm, Smith Schaefer, doesn't audit all elements of the city. There's two areas, the electric and water utility at RPU and the DMCC, which by accounting standards were required to blend that in to the city's report. They were audited by other firms. We did not go out and duplicate their work. We're just relying on their unmodified opinions that were issued on each of their financial statements in issuing the overall, a modified opinion on the city's financial. Lastly, the city does participate in the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. Their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, a program. That was a program that was developed many years ago to encourage governments to go above and beyond the minimum reporting requirements and provide more information in this document, in the annual comprehensive financial report. More information, more transparency. So we, city submitted the 2022 report. They received the award for the 52nd consecutive year. So the city has a longstanding history of quality financial reporting out to the users of the financial statements. And we will submit the 23 report, which we just issued. We certainly anticipate that that continues to conform to the requirements of the program. In addition to issuing the opinion on the financial statements, we're required to do some work around, because of the amount of federal dollars that the city receives. We have to do specific procedures on those federal dollars and that work is continuing in July. We will issue the report prior to the due date, which is September 30th of 24. And then lastly, we did get a chance to meet with the Audit Committee last week, spend a little bit more time than we will today. Going over the results of the 23 audit. We talk about accounting standards that impact the city, both current and future, as well as review the auditor's responsibility letter, which is our required communication to those charged governance. So I want to thank members of that committee for their participation and time. That's a brief summary of the audit results. We like to take this opportunity then, as we've done in in past years, to take a look back at the financial statements for 2023. And it's really, we're going to take kind of a 10,000 foot view here of the city. There's a lot of activity going on at the city and we're going to cover a lot of it. I'm going to move through it pretty expeditiously, but we certainly have time at the end for questions or to revisit any particular slides that anybody wants to review. I'm going to start out talking about governmental funds. The city has 2020 or 22 governmental funds. We've listed those out here. On this chart, we have our primary operating fund, which is the general fund. We have a variety of special revenue funds that are set aside for specific purposes. We have our CIP fund and then debt service funds. And then after we look at that information, we're going to move on to enterprise proprietary funds, both enterprise and internal service. They account for things slightly differently because they are tended to run like businesses. So we use full accrual accounting versus fund basis accounting on the governmental side. And then the difference between enterprise and internal service is just internal service. The customers are actually the city itself. So we use those versus enterprise or customers are external. So I will get started here on chart five. So we're looking at the general fund operations. So the revenues and expenditures. And as we go through these fund operational charts here at the beginning, they're all going to be somewhat similar. The the first column in each year. So you've got multiple years of data here. I'm going to be focused primarily on 23. But they're going to have a first column in each year, which is going to be the funding sources where the dollars are coming in to help fund the operations. The second column will be expenditures, outlays of funds. And then the third column would be the the change, increase or decrease in any particular year. A few charts will add a fourth column for a fund balance if it doesn't have its own separate slide. So starting out, looking at general fund, our revenues for for 2023. Main revenue sources in the general fund is property tax levy. That was about $63 million. That's up from 59 million the year before. That's about a 6.7% increase, I think overall levy increased by 7%. Then in addition to tax levy, we also get other revenue sources and that's grouped together in the blue there. That was about 34 million. It's going to be things like license and permit fee revenues that we get, charges for services. The lodging tax collections are grouped in there as well as investment income and then other governmental revenue that we get into the general fund. Things like state aid, LGA state aid that we get. And then lastly, at the yellow portion of the bar there, we bring in 13.6 million in that last bullet there for in lieu of tax payments from the utilities. So you add all those together. We had $111 million in revenues in 2023. Expenses were $106 million. That was an increase of about $9.4 million. I do want to point out that there was an accounting standard change that we were required to implement this year, dealing with subscription based IT arrangements, software commitments. And so the the Police Department does have a long term software commitment. So we had to record. It's a one time non cash. We show it as an expenditure and as an equaling revenue required by the standards. And I noted that, but refer to it as Sabita as an acronym for it. That was about 2.8 million. So if you took that out, it's really an unusual item. Our actual operating expenditures within the general fund increased by about 6.8%, which is kind of in line with our levy increase for the year. So that surplus then for the year was 4.7 million within the general fund, which then increased our fund balance, unassigned fund balance in the general fund to 51.6 million. You can see there and a ratio that's typically used to take a look at what your fund reserves are relative to the size of the the government or the general fund. And so we compare, one metric is to compare it to your expenditures for the year. That's one we've typically used for this year. With that increase, we did go up 1% to 48% of our annual operating expenditures on hand compared to 47% the year before. We did add another metric this year and that was just taking a look at what is that fund balance percentage of 24 budgeted expenditures? And that dropped it down to 45%. So we have 45% on hand of next year's budget at the end of 23. Either way, both of those metrics are above the 42% minimum, no less than 42% policy that the council has passed for the general fund. One of the reasons that we have that 42% minimum target is for cash flow purposes. Property taxes being our primary revenue source in the general fund only comes in twice a year. And so we have to fund operations each year. So you see the cash balance here decreasing each month until those dollars come in. That was the general fund. Now we'll move on to special revenue funds. We don't have a chart for every single one, but we have several of the larger ones here. The first one we're going to look at is in the library. Library funding source, again, in that first column of the 23 grouping, is predominantly funded through taxes that both from the city, which is in the blue, 7.8 million property taxes, and then 1.2 million from the county. So the combination of those two fund most of the library activities. There is a small amount of user fees, which is the the green portion at the top there, 485,000. So we brought in total revenues of 9.5 million. The expenditures for the library were 9.3 million, nine point roughly. So we had a surplus of about 223,000 in 2023. That increased their fund balance to 3.45 million or about 37% of their expenditures. And that last bar there is the fund balance. So you can see the history there. Our next one is municipal rec. So this includes all the items that are in that that first bullet there. So this is combined altogether, those operations and activities. Again, funding sources, there is a good amount of property tax levy that's going to fund operations primarily for the parks, 9.6 million. But then these other activities do generate more user fees. We had about four and a half million, which is about the same as the year before. Overall, for the fund, we brought in about 14.7 million between those expenditures for 14.4 million. So we had about a $300,000 surplus. That increased the fund balance to 2.6 million at the end of the year. If you look back at the history here, one, we did use some fund reserves. We had brought that fund balance down as we had used dollars for capital related purposes. And then the last two years, we operated a surplus which had brought that balance back up. The next chart, chart 11, looks at drilling down within municipal rec. I've got a couple of charts here for for specific activities. The first one is the rec center. So the funding is a combination of property taxes and user fees. So the user fees of a million dollars doesn't cover the 1.65 million in operating costs. And so we supplement that by adding in property tax levy. For both years, the funding sources, you can see, were pretty similar, but our expenses were up slightly at the rec center. So we had a shortfall of about $50,000 for 2023 compared to a surplus of about 100 the year before. Graham Marina's are next. Graham covers more of their operating costs through the user fees that we charge there, but not all of that. Our agreement on Graham with the county is that we share the shortfall 50/50 between what the fees cover versus, what the total operating costs are. So the county contribution then is represented by the yellow. And then we do allocate property tax levy, but it wasn't enough to cover the shortfall that occurred in 2023. So the rest of it is just borne by the decrease in in fund reserves, the deficit that we have there. Gulf operations, other revenues, they actually cover about 95% of their direct operating costs. The revenues this year were 1.65 million. That was an increase of about $150,000. We did have a rate increase for fees out at the Gulf operation. We also do put levy in there of about 267,000. So a combination of those, we did generate in excess of about 170,000 from Gulf in 2023. Then lastly, is parks. Park is funded not so much by user fees, as you can see there in the green, a relatively small amount as we don't charge for most of our park activities. But the property tax levy then bears the the load for covering the operating costs. The levy was 7.6 million. But that, along with the fees, we generated about 600,000 more than our operating costs in 2023. So those were part of municipal rec. Moving on to other special revenue funds, we've got the airport. This far, first chart takes a look at the airport operating revenues. So there's four main revenue categories there, landing, loading fees, commissions, which is on parking lots and car rentals and so on. And then land and building rent. If you look at this, certainly the impact of the pandemic you're seeing there in 2020 with those commission revenues, which are in the red, dropping pretty dramatically. And again, commission revenues usage is all usage driven at the airport. And if passenger traffic is down, we're not using as much parking lot. We're not renting as many cars. And so that dropped pretty dramatically. But the other thing you'll notice is the blue, that's other revenues. Well, that went up about about a similar amount as the drop in revenues. And those are federal relief dollars that that are provided to airports, not just Rochester, all airports to deal with this issue and the lingering facts. I think we're seeing that from passenger traffic as well as the revenues that were generating there. We're still feeling the effects of the pandemic and haven't gotten back to pre pandemic levels. But with that additional federal dollars, we're continuing to generate surpluses. If you look at the next chart, then our operating revenues, those four combined there plus investment income on the fund reserves there equate to the airport revenues in the yellow, about total of about 7.1 million. We do levy about a half a million dollars for airport for paying for utilities and customs. But we did operate at a surplus this last year of about 1.7 million. So that increased the fund reserves within airport from 10.4 million up to about 12.1 million. And then this is again available for local mash toward airport capital projects and so on. We do have the runway project ongoing right now, but we do have also have airport funding in the CIP that has covered those local costs up till this point. Transit, so our transit operations, one thing you'll note here is that we don't have property tax levies to support our property taxes. We had a small amount back in 2014, 15, but it's primarily funded through federal and state grant for operations. They do get user fees in the orange there. That was 1.7 million. That was about the same as the previous year. We did generate a surplus then this last year of about 1.3 million. That increased the fund balance for trans up to 4.7 million. Again, those dollars are available for use for for local share of capital. I think we have a significant number of bus purchases planned for 2024. If you look at 2021, just for example, that was a year where we used some capital. So we drew down those reserves, brought our fund balance down. And then we've been building it up since then. And then our last special revenue chart here looks at the Bioscience Center operations. This is floors four through eight. Bioscience Center below that is our TIF floors. So we bring in rental revenues in the green there of about 2.6 million. That covers our operating cost of about 1,006. So there's an excess of a million dollars and that is used to pay back the bonds that we issued to build the floors four through eight. So we do a transfer out for debt service of about 928,000. But we did have a small increase this year, about 200,000, increasing their fund balance to 2.6 million. We looked at the general fund, the special revenue funds. Now we're going to quickly walk through our debt service balances here. The first one is our EDA, our EDA lease revenue bonds. The year ending balance is 25 million. So we paid those down. There's two elements within that. There's a bond for the TIF or the non TIF portion that we just talked about at the Bioscience Center. We owe about 7 million left on that. And then we issued bonds in 2020 for construction of the Development Services Infrastructure Center and the North Precinct. The balance owed on those at the end of 23 was about 18 million. We do have one TIF bond. This was for the TIF portion of the Bioscience Center. So it was a split project. We were able to pay down a significant chunk of those in 2019 and we owe just roughly about 750,000 at the end of the year. So those are almost paid off. The 2017 tax increment bonds were issued back in 2017 for construction of parking ramp number six. And we're paying those down. We owe about 17 and a half million at the end of 2023. Back in 2010, we issued some Build America bonds that were refunded in 2020. So that's why there's the the change in the color on the balances there each year. Those bonds were issued to fund the Public Works Ops Center as well as transit ops and a purchase of a fire truck. And so we owe roughly about 15 million on those at the end of 23. Issued lodging revenue, lodging tax revenue bonds in 2015 for 43 million. That was the city share of the Civic Center expansion. We paid those down. Those are being paid with the lodging tax collections. We owe about 32 million on those. Sales tax revenue bonds were issued in 2015 for, again, for 41 million for those projects associated with the sales tax authorization. We were able to pay, call some bonds last year in 2022. So we paid those down. We owe roughly about 10 million. And again, sales tax collections are funding those bond payments. And then lastly, we've got one new bond issue in 2023. That was the issue for the park and rec improvements, Soldier's Field Pool, Silver Lake, other park and rec. Issued 12.4 million with the intent to repay those then with a portion of the park and rec annual levy. Annual referendum levy. Another liability besides bonds that we were required by our standards a number of years ago to add to the city's financials is governments that participate in multi employer plan like PERA, the state plan are required to record in their financial statements their share of any underfunding. And it's a pro rata share. So they base it on what Rochester contributes to what all the governments that participate in para contribute. So you get a percentage of that. So the liability for, they do an actuarial study every every June and issue that. For this last study, it was 78.4 million was our pro rata share, which we do allocate to to governments and utilities. You can see, just looking at the chart, that the impact of the actuarial study and the assumptions that they use, as well as the market performance on the investments that they have can can have large swings in that balance. We came back down to kind of a level that seems more appropriate. And just for council's information, that last bullet there, they, this last study, they do say that they're about 83% funded for the general employee fund and then 86.5% for the police and fire. That's what the PEP PF is, Police and Fire Fund. I have one chart here on the CIP. This is the fund balance of the CIP. So we ended the year in 2023 at 253 million in fund balance. That's up about 40 million from the previous year. We've listed out in the bullets there, kind of the larger areas, things like the flood control, the infrastructures, infrastructure sales tax projects. The largest increase this year was with the DMCC initiative. That was up about 27 million. We have about 87 million on hand of state and sales tax dollars that are going toward that program. Moving on to enterprise funds, the first one takes a look at parking. So parking, again, revenues, and and these are funds, these are enterprise funds, are supposed to charge enough to the customers to cover their costs. So their revenues were in the green there, 7.3 million, actually down just a little bit from the previous year as we did some restructuring, friendly parking. And then there's other revenues, more significant the last couple of years. In 2022, there we got a $2 million ramp settlement. In 2023, we got federal funding for the 75th Street Park and Ride. So those were additional revenues that we brought in. Our operating costs plus the payment in lieu, which is in the tan, and then transfers out for debt service, again, on the ramp bonds. So we netted a surplus this year of about 1.4 million. One thing to note, we did run deficits in 2020 and 2021 coming out of the pandemic. Parking was different from some other areas in the city that they didn't get it. There wasn't any federal programs provided additional funding. So that just had to come out of the fund reserve within parking. The next chart takes a look at the electric utility operations. Revenues for the year were 188 million.
One second, Jason, we got.
Thank you. Revenues for the year were 188 million. They were up about 13 million. We did have a rate increase in in electric, about two and a half percent. Usage was up during 2023 as well as the power cost adjustment that was passed through to customers with the increase in power costs. Other expenses were about 160 million. So we had a surplus of about 100, about 30 million this year. We'll talk about that in a second here. Let me just get through water as well, since this is RPU together. Water revenues were up 14.6 million. We did have a rate increase of about 5% there. Usage was up as well, driving that increase in revenues. We generated a surplus in water, about 2.9 million for the year. And so this chart 35, if you look at that, the unrestricted cash investments has increased because of those surpluses that they've been running. We ended the year at 132 million in cash. The top line is the overall operating expenses and and payment in lieu of taxes. So that was 178 million. So on a percentage basis, we have about 74% of those annual expenses on hand. If you compare that to earlier in the in the chart, we were running at about 30%. So RPU has made a concerted effort to increase their cash reserves in anticipation of the costs associated with their their transition resource plan that they have as they move away from SIPA at the end of their contract. Away from SIPA at the end of their contract in twenty thirty. Of that hundred and thirty two million, that is mostly electric, a hundred and seventeen million associated with that. Sewer utility, their revenues were thirty three million dollars this last year, down some from the previous year when we looked at that. We brought in fewer dollars for plant investment fees and sewer availability fees, which are. Dependent primarily on development. So those dollars were down, but our expenses were roughly about the same. We did have a surplus. Similar to the previous year of about fifteen million dollars. And so that went into sewer reserves, their cash reserves. We ended the year roughly about forty eight million in cash reserves. And you can see historically there, we had built up reserves and we use some for capital purchases. Capital activities and at the sewer plant can be rather expensive. And we've been built that up the last couple of years, ended the year at forty eight million. Last enterprise fund is the stormwater. So. Stormwater fees, no rate changes there. So the general revenues were about the same. Overall, we ran higher revenues with the investment income that we have this year and the fair amount of value adjustment. The prior year was actually a negative. We generated about three point three million in surplus within stormwater for the year, which added to their fund. Cash reserves, which you can see on this chart, ended the year at thirty two point million, or excuse me, thirty two million. Those dollars then are available as part of their for capital needs as part of their surface water management plan. Wrapping up our fund review, we're going to look at internal service funds. The first one is equipment revolving. So in the yellow, you've got departmental charges. So that's what the equipment revolving charges out to the departments for their budgets. And then the green represents equipment acquisitions. So we've talked about this in past years. Historically, if you look back, we were acquiring more equipment and then we were charging out, which brought down our net position within the fund. If you look at that period from twenty one to current, we are actually running a little bit of surplus, which is increasing that fund balance, which was intended. The three point three million that we spent, you can see listed out in the bullet there, the items that were purchased during the year. ITRF is a similar operation, just in the IT area. Revenues that charged out were two point nine million, our operating costs and acquisitions were a million and a half. So we did have a surplus this year. And when you look at their net position. Equipment revolving fund ended the year at ten point four million. That's up from three point two million back in two thousand and seventeen. So that was that period where we were drawing down. And now we've increased that back up over the last five years. And then the ITRF fund ended with seven point five million in unrestricted net position. Self insurance, so the city self insurers for property loss, for medical, for work comp. Couple of things to point out here. So the dark color there is the cash reserves. And I want to point that out. We actually saw an increase this last year from thirty one point eight million up to thirty three million. And really, over the last ten years, hasn't it's gone down some, but then it's come back up. And so that's our reserves against risk for loss. What has changed somewhat dramatically is is the net position of the fund, which is represented by the blue there. A lot of that is accounting standard related, requiring us to book additional liabilities for old PEB, other post employment benefits. As well as more in this past year, we we had a change in our estimate for a claim leg for accrued claims that had a sizable impact on the fund. A one time sizable impact on the fund this from a net position standpoint. But just a note to the council that those cash reserves are continuing to to hold steady. If you look at the benefit charges, which is in the yellow again, and then the benefits expense. So it looks larger, but again, that includes that those accounting standard and and adjustment estimates for accrued claims. If you back those out, which is about five and a half million this year, our benefit payments and our employee charges were about the same. So we did see an increase in our reserves because we had investment income on on those outstanding balances. Alright, so that's a look through the funds. I've got just a couple more charts and then we can open it up for questions. The first one takes a look at the city. So we all know Rochester is a growing city. So that's reflective in our taxable market value that's there to spread the levy. We did see about a six percent increase from twenty. Three to twenty four. It's up about one point one billion dollars. So just keep that in mind as we're looking at these trend charts for revenues and expenditures. Governmental fund revenues. So the first one there, property tax levy, as I mentioned earlier, the levy was a seven percent increase. So that. Increased to ninety two million dollars. That includes that two million dollar parking wreck referendum levy. Tax increment, that was about ten million dollars. Those dollars have been increasing in revenues as we've had additional. A tax increment related development occurring in the city. Non property and sales tax, that's going to include your lodging taxes. So you can see the impact. Lodging tax was definitely impacted by the pandemic, which was the twenty twenty year. The blue, but we've gotten back to pre pandemic levels there. We brought in thirty six million total. LGA is local government aid. That's monies from the state. We are actually seeing a decline in the amount of LGA that the city is receiving. In twenty twenty three, that was about four million dollars and then in lieu of tax payments, we looked at earlier at thirteen point six million. Other revenues, charges for services. So those are fees for the services that we provide. We can see again, the pandemic had an impact on those as activity was reduced. As well as we had a change, I think I brought to council's attention in the past with how we are accounting for civic center operations. We used to handle that internally. Now we are contracting that out, so we don't have the revenue side. We also don't have the gross expense side. We just have a net cost that's going through the general fund. Federal, city, state, those are all other governmental revenues and those are highly dependent on the activity that we have going on in any particular year. So for this last year, we brought in about eighty five million dollars. A lot of that, we get airport federal money for airport. We talked about the transit, federal and state aids that we get from for for those operations. The state gave us a one time five million dollar public safety aid in twenty twenty three, so that's all included in there. Investment income. So we are required to mark to market fair value for our investment portfolio. So there is some fluctuations there depending on market performance. But this last year was twenty twenty three was a good year. We had a thirteen million dollar increase in our investment income. And then other revenues were about sixteen million. That's a variety of things like assessments and license and permits, rents miscellaneous. On the other side, our outlays, our expenditures, the first category is general government. That's administration. Finance, clerks, attorneys, those departments, the spending for. This past year was about eighteen million dollars there. Police, fire, public safety, the next three categories are all public safety related. In total, we spent about sixty three million dollars in public safety activities. Predominantly, you can see there, police and fire at thirty five and twenty one respectively. Other public safety, that's going to be primarily building safety. That was about six point seven million. Airport costs were up slightly as well as transit finished the year. At twelve point eight million. Other expenditures, park and wreck and mail civic center, again, that twenty twenty year, you can see the pandemic had an impact on. On our outlay of costs as well as the the change in how we are counting for the civic center. We spent about fourteen million dollars in park and wreck as we saw earlier. Culture, which is primarily library, ten point eight million, economic development and tourism. Couple of changes there. DMCC started in twenty seventeen. So that was the increase in that particular year and then the change in operations for the civic center in twenty twenty one. So we spent about nine point two million there, sixteen point five million in public works and about a million dollars in community reinvestment. The twenty twenty year there again was pandemic related. We did some pass through grants for businesses and that ran through that category. Chart fifty one, so as the city continues to grow, we've been evaluating, kind of looking at. What's going on with the property taxes primarily and to some extent LGA. And what we've done is. Taken the real dollars for property taxes that we collected and divided by the population is kind of a metric for growth. In the city. So if you look at twenty twenty three, our total tax levy divided by the hundred and twenty five thousand in population. Worked out to about seven hundred and twenty dollars per capita. So that's the twenty twenty three. LGA worked out to be about thirty two dollars. And then what we did in each of the years, we divided those by the population as well as we use the CPI for this region. To adjust the the previous year's dollars to be comparable to twenty twenty three. So if I look at this, if you look at just twenty two and twenty three, you can see on a per capita basis, even though we increased the levy seven percent. The spending power of that levy is roughly about the same, given the growth and the and the inflation rate. They both calculated out at about seven hundred and twenty dollars per person. The other thing to take away is that LGA, which we saw earlier, is being reduced. That's becoming less and less of a portion of our budget. For the city, you know, we went from about eighty dollars per person back in twenty fourteen to about thirty. Last couple of charts. Spent too much time here, but. Years ago, we were required to add additional set of statements to to rather than have fund and then enterprise funds that account for things differently. We had to add these government wide statements that account for things on a full accrual basis. And so we continue to report those as we're required to do in the statements, but. What what the information is providing here is basically there's certain activities that we get funding sources that cover their costs and then there's certain activities that don't. And so the the largest cost, net cost to the city would be public safety activities. There's a net cost of about fifty three million dollars. We get. Some aid associated with that, but most of that is borne by the the property tax levy. Followed by public works and and general government operations and. Park and wreck and and culture or libraries. So those are all users of those general funds. We have to have the levy to help support those activities. Whereas if you look at things like transit, we get federal and state money that funds most of that. So they actually have a surplus. On the airport as well, the the fees that we're able to generate cover our operating costs and we get a lot of. Federal and state grants for capital to that occurs out at the airport. So.
And Jason, is the library included in the culture category? Okay.
And so then just a kind of a quick summary of fund balances for the city. So we talked about general fund or on the signed fund balance ended at. Forty eight percent of our twenty three expenditures. If you look at twenty four budgeted, it's about forty five percent either way, above our forty two percent minimum. Library ended at thirty seven percent municipal rec. We did see an increase the last couple of years. We're at nineteen percent. Airport operating fund balance at twelve million dollars available for future capital. Transit had an increase. They ended at four point seven million. There's two hundred and fifty three million dollars in our CAIP fund. Parking at seventeen million. We're servicing our debt in the electric and sewer utilities, paying those back, generating excesses and building cash reserves there. Self insurance, we did see an increase overall in our cash reserves for the year and then equipment revolving. Fund balance restored back to about ten million dollars. So that is. High level summer. The financials for the city.
Just that.
So with that, I guess I will turn it back over and see if.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. The mayor and I are on the audit committee, so I've had a chance to see the higher level results, but it's good to see the details today. Question about the fund balances for the library and other. Departments within the city. Is there a standard that we're aiming for with those departments or is it just good that they have a positive fund balance? So the nineteen percent, thirty seven percent compared to the rec center, which is part of parks and rec.
Right.
Just say a little more about that.
Know if we have a specific fund balance policy for those other funds.
I don't believe we have a specific policy, but we're working on all our financial policies. I would say that library and park and rec are. What you would maybe want to have those be more similar to the general fund, but also they are. Still swinging back from the pandemic and to that degree. I would say most communities, those. Functions are in the general fund. So if you did have a challenge where something was occurring. And you've done this before, for example, the library roof was paid for out of general capital dollars or. Being able to make adjustments with golf fees, things of that nature. There are abilities to pivot. So for the other funds like utilities. That's a different type of standard. They really have such essential capital items that they need to do.
Yeah.
Some cities will use three months operating and one and like one year of capital. So those are a little bit different. There's not a specific standard, but you. The the larger concerning ones, I would argue, are the utilities and I think we've done a good job there. Glad to see the. Equipment replacement fund going back in the correct direction. We inherited some. Overspending and I would just again point out that. The challenge with having too much in either the library or park fund is that per your charter, it cannot come the other way.
Right. That's why I'm wondering how much in advance do you need?
It probably could come the other way, but it would require council action and you would probably have some people that were arguing that it couldn't come the other way, but.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, thanks. My first one is just on the fund balances and this is on your page. Let me get my my stuff together here, right? I think it's on page packet, page fifty two, page thirty. It's that fund balance total of two hundred and fifty. Plus million dollars. I whatever way I'm thinking that means, it means something totally different because when I add up the numbers underneath it, it's. Nothing like a fun balance. It's there's something around here that I I need a deeper understanding of.
Okay. So this is the fund balance in the CIP. So this is. Multiple funds pulled together. We report the CIP as one column in the city's financial statements. So they ended the year with about two hundred and fifty three million dollars in in. Fund balance.
So if if a fund balance to me sounds like it's our savings account for when we go to do these projects, we take the money out and pay for it.
It's. Roughly equates to that. There are timing differences of when the cash comes in. So there's possibly our receivables booked in monies that we have yet to receive.
So I see the two fifty like high level and then I've got an economic development loan of two oh nine. I've got other very large numbers in there that add up way above two fifty. So.
Two oh nine thousand, two hundred and nine thousand, not.
Oh, the EDA is two hundred and nine thousand. Okay, so that does. So this really is money set aside. Okay. And. It has those different names next to it. Are those under our CIP projects that we would be spending that out of? Okay, yeah, I think that was my problem. I was reading that number wrong. I couldn't figure.
Just maybe add something. Those will also, it could be within different funds. So like the sewer and water would be within that fund, but. Basically across your entire budget, you have that much committed and available to be able to complete those projects.
Okay, let me let me say, because this is a helpful discussion. I mean, I think of when I see the sewer. Utility of their fund, they have a balance there. That's but but that cash is probably sitting somewhere else. Is it sitting in here or are these only for approved capital projects?
I don't believe so.
So the sewer cash is sitting in the sewer fund. It is not in the CIP. I don't know if there's any sewer related activity sitting in CIP. I don't think so.
The sewer and water on the second one, eight point three million.
That is correct. So there is there is some.
So there would be a component of some of these or like the airport. So there's. Funds committed and it's available. We might not have those funds because we get repaid from the federal government.
And I I'm trying to appreciate the complexity there that I I want to have, I want to know what that balance is and I realize it's not all just sitting in the lot box. But I I'm also trying to get a like a better understanding of what I'm looking at. Would we take loans against this?
Put potentially depending on, for example, I think probably the best example of that is the fifty million dollars that's listed for. Sales tax, maybe I'm hallucinating. Did I see that somewhere?
Yep, tax increment twenty three.
Now, for some reason, I can't see it. There it is. So for example, when you are bonding for the sports center. You know that you have that committed for that amount of money through the voters and the legislature's approval in order to move forward. With approval, some of that is probably also twenty thirteen dollars that we still have available.
Okay, alright.
Or nineteen, I don't remember, nineteen eighty seven, whatever that one was for flood control.
Yeah, okay. Again, I'm just trying to make sure when I look at them, I think of it as. It is sort of the the treasury part of the city's business where they're managing their money. Would that be a good way to think of it?
Well, these are dollars that the city has. That's not in any other funds. There's money that are in the is in the general fund or money in special revenue funds. If you look at cash balances, the city has much larger cash balances than two hundred and fifty three million dollars. You look at it in total. This is the portion that has been set aside for for capital improvement projects. We may not have all of that in cash, but most of it is sitting in cash.
Okay.
Or to be collected in some.
Like be collected shortly within the next year.
Alright.
And then those dollars are then, we we have buckets within the CIP that we. Are holding those dollars and that's where the numbers that we came here. And then again, this is at a high level. If you looked at the number of.
Actually, Jason, this is a good discussion. I think I'm I'm getting a feel for how they cross reference. I I just wanted to make sure that it is not something like. When I see something like tax increment in there, I I've struggled to think that we have. Twenty three million dollars from tax increments sitting there, but but I I think I I'll have to do my own study on it because I'm just trying to get comfortable. A different question on, this is kind of a gram arena we show there and this is, I believe, on your page. Your packet, page twelve, our packet thirty four. It's kind of a just run, I'm going to say, gosh, I'm seeing pretty consistent red there. Is a management discussion, would I say we shouldn't be doing this or how how would that be a mistake on reading an audit?
No, so. No, so the red is basically generated. So we this is kind of a departmental within the municipal rec fund. As part of our budgeting process, we allocate a portion of tax levy for the operations of of Graham Arena like we do for the rec center, like we do for parks, right? And the amount that we've been allocating is not enough to cover our share in that particular year. And so we show it as a as a because we didn't allocate that out. We show it as a use of fund reserves for the municipal rec. So I wouldn't look at at it as though, you know, operationally, we're not doing it. We've we we run the rec center at a much larger usage of of property taxes than we do here for Graham Arena. Graham Arena covers a significant portion of theirs through operation.
Okay.
Your question, whether we should anticipate a higher investment on the front end to so we aren't seeing.
My my question had to do, I mean, I understand that some things you could run as as a deficit. I I understand that this is not, but this is also sort of a partnership with the county. And I and I am, I'm to me, it's a really important service for a subset of the community. But I also don't know if I'm being shown red numbers over a five year span and just going like, oh, um, what do I should I worry about it? And that's sort of the it's but it's more of a managerial operational question than it is an audit question.
It's still added to the overall parks.
Yep.
Fund balance. So again, this would get back to the if it was a higher fund balance, you would have that question of if you were to allocate more at the beginning of the year, maybe you would have had five hundred thousand dollars go to fund balance. Maybe that's good, maybe that's concerning. That's a real policy question.
Yeah, I was trying to ask that question as well. So this is part of the overall parks budget, right? Which is operating in the black with a decent fund balance. So it's managing across all the different.
Yeah, within those departments, we're going to have some are going to do better in a year and some are not going to do as well. So it didn't add it out to a.
But this one shows pretty consistent negative numbers. It's it's not it's not a like a fluky thing. But again, I it really is more of a managerial question than it's not. I think what you're saying is the numbers you're seeing here, you can trust them. Okay. A similar sort of question on on transit. And I want to make sure like I take pride in the fact that we run this off of the levy. We run this through state and federal. And then operationally, we have to generate twenty percent and we're able to provide a service that way. I I want to make sure, though, that when I look at that or say that, is there, am I seeing capital? Or there's other C I P that we're paying somewhere else and benefiting transit? Or is that really under a transit enterprise?
Well, I believe most of the funding for transit stays within transit. Although I do think there is some funding that is in C I P.
There was a small amount in C I P, and that was to do the improvements to the shelters. So we did those shelter improvements. And in particular, that was focused on those shelters that had challenges with accessibility. So I think for two years in a row, we put two hundred or two hundred fifty thousand. I don't know that if that continues. And then there has been a little bit related to buses.
Okay, I I guess my audit statement here, again, I'm not complaining. But it is one of those things that when I see something as an enterprise fund and I see it as covered, I I want to be able to trust that. And I guess I'm I was bringing that up here because if there are places where, as an example, I I know I deal with this with the airport. I know we have some levy coverage there, but we're trying to other strategies to improve the revenues there to keep it from that. So if there but if there are ways that I'm unaware that there's there's other levy spending going on for that, I I would want to be aware of that.
It has only been for those finite capital investments.
Okay, good.
A lion's share is not, I mean, it's a very small amount in the grand scheme of transit. And I believe the bus purchase was a while ago.
Yeah.
That was to, I believe, make the difference with some of the electric buses.
Okay, all right, helpful. Thank you. A last question, just on that I'm trying to understand. I I do understand ramp six, we 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 borrowed money. There was a but it calls it a tax increment bond. I I'm getting my terms confused here with what a tax increment is versus, I mean, when you go out to borrow money, what makes it a tax increment bond?
So it's tax increment bond if it's being funded, repaid with with increments generated as part of that district.
But but is it it? I thought the the way the ramp was built, it is a public entity that does not pay taxes.
Your honor.
Yeah, Mr. Parrish.
Yeah, so in this case, the ramp six was developed in conjunction with the Hilton project. And so the tax increments that are pledged are generated off of the Hilton facility. And they partially support the payment of the debt. But it's the blended blended project. So there's definitely parking proceeds that are paid there as well as some tax increment.
So this is it says a tax increment bond. It's paying for the other that portion of ramp six. And the rest comes from the parking utility. Okay, good. I I do appreciate getting these updates. I know it's there. I probably should be more engaged in this stuff other times of the year, but it is helpful to look through it. And I appreciate you you bringing it to us.
Mr. Keen, any other discussion? All right, council member Dennis?
Thank you. So I was just back when you went through the liability, there's a liability insurance. Oh, my goodness, but I wasn't formulating my question right away, but I just wanted to throw that out. So if there was like employee issues, would that go up then with the fun? Like, does that play into factor what it is year from year, depending on what kind of issues are happening with the city for liability insurance?
Or health insurance or property?
Yeah, well, I I'm sorry, I didn't. I wasn't going to ask this question because I thought it was I could ask in private, but I just wanted.
Might be referencing his slide forty four packet, page sixty six, which I believe the self insurance fund referenced was actually health insurance. But I would defer to Jason.
Yeah, so what what plays into factor that going up or down per year?
So so on the medical side, we have to evaluate what we think our costs are going to be. And then we charge those essentially like an insurance company would. We charge those costs out to each department. So they set those rates every year. And that's evaluated by city staff to determine what those rates are. And then that's included in the budget for, you know, each department has their costs associated with providing for self insurance. And it can be impacted by the amount of claim volume in year, the fund performance. If the claims end up being larger than than what we had projected, then that that's what that reserve is there. That cash reserve is there to cover. Now, just a reminder, the city doesn't cover a hundred percent of their health insurance risk. We we provide, we we buy coverage, stop loss coverage. And so if there were any significant, really large claims, that would trigger those top load loss coverage payments.
Yeah, I see a a pretty big jump in twenty twenty three, but I see there's a lot of increase in twenty twenty three on a lot of the charts too. So I just didn't know if that was because of the growth of the city, growth of, you know, staffing, or if it was because of claims being brought to the city.
So so it is going up. Obviously, health healthcare costs are going up, right? And we have to deal with that. That increase in twenty twenty three, I did mention earlier, that was that's not necessarily a cash outlay increase. Our cash balances did go up. We changed an estimate that's in the financial statements for timing of when we recognize claims. And that had a significant impact in the current year. But you wouldn't see that necessarily going forward. That was a one time change from the the provider that that gives us those estimates on what they think their outstanding claims are at that particular point in time.
Okay, wonderful. And my last question is Smith Schaefer obviously is, you know, employed by the city. And is that contract up this year or there? I just refreshed my memory.
I believe we did a two year extension. This was the first year of that two year extension.
And then there will be maybe competitive bidding or opened up to other entities as well.
That would be a city's discretion.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Boynton, for your presentation and working with our team and the clean audit. Good news. Okay, we will take just a five or so minute break as we get reset and meet back here about five fifteen.
Yeah.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Welcome back, everyone. I'm very pleased to welcome our DEI Director Chow Motella to talk about the Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Audit with your team, I believe.
Yes.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity again to come before you and talk a little bit about Jedi Audits. I know you have seen this come by in front of you in terms of requesting funding. And so I thought it would be a good opportunity for you to understand, learn a little bit about just Jedi Audits. So that when they come before you next time, there's a more comprehensive understanding of what the work is. So I'll take you back a little bit to 2021, when I joined the city. And at that time did kind of an overview of the entire city, like many residents, without the recognition of all of the diverse work that happens within our community. With public works as an example, being very different from the library. Huge recognition that having an audit like that, that is all encompassing, doesn't give us the value we need from an equity perspective on what each department would need to change. Because that is too vast and too wide. So one of the things that we thought about is, as we're doing these audits, we want to center the voices and experiences of our diverse community members. And we're thinking about diversity here quite broadly. We're thinking about age, disability, race and ethnicity, socioeconomic status, et cetera. But we also want to acknowledge that for these community members, they often have very unique and disparate experiences in the community that we live in. So how do we think about our policies, our ordinances, our processes from the lands of those community members that might have very unique experiences? When we began, we knew that they were immediate changes that we needed to make, which is what you see reflected in our DIA action plan currently. But we also talked a lot about systemic change. And what does it mean to do the things that you need to do right now, but to be really thoughtful and plan ahead for things that we need to do in the next five, 10 years that will impact the community that is going to be changing and that is changing quite quickly. And one of the things that we had asked our teammates to do is to talk about what they prioritize within the organization. And that's how we came up with our equity statement, which I'm sure and hope that you've all read it. And one of the things that stands out to me in that equity statement is teammates said that we believe equity should be at the center of all of our work. But more profound is that last statement that they make. It says that we acknowledge the racial, economic and socioeconomic disparities that exist in our community and we commit to engaging in personal and systemic changes to impact these disparities. They said that they commit to educating themselves on inequities to better provide services to our community. And they promise to lead by example and hold themselves accountable. And so that's part of that account that we're talking about. We cannot improve what we don't know. And we all must be able to acknowledge that historically, a lot of our departments, a lot of our policies, processes, were developed at a time that we were not thinking about equity in the same way that we do today. So how do we take time to know and understand how those policies and processes were developed? How do we measure, audit and evaluate so that we can make improvements? So these Jedi Audits, beyond the professional development that we do, are a very intentional and systemic way of evaluating departments specifically. It's a collaborative effort between myself, the department and our consultant that comes to work with us, who provides an overview of areas that are very specific, that the department itself has said are important for them to evaluate. We're able to get recommendations from that process and things that we're able to implement into equity plans or changes in policy and practice that have come before you, maybe, or that you see changing within our organization. So with that, I don't want to talk too long. This is the favorite part of my job is that I get to work with all of the departments across the organization. And so you'll get to hear from our consultant that gives us a brief overview of the process itself. But then you'll get to hear from the brave, brave departments that chose to go first. So our Human Resources Department that went ahead and participated in 2022. And then our Parks and Recreation Team, as well as our Library Teammates, have participated in 2023. So I will invite Amanda Goodenough to come up here and join us.
Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Amanda Florence Garcia. Good enough I use she in her pronouns. And I just want to thank you for your time tonight and for the opportunity to present our work on the Jedi Audits, Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion audits that we've conducted across various departments within the City of Rochester. I'm going to begin by covering just two main areas. So our background as consultants and then the methodology that we use for these audits. And then I'm going to turn over to the leadership from each department to give you a more in-depth overview of the work that has been carried out. So for our team, our Good Enough Consulting Team for this project currently consists of about four to five consultants who engage in transformative equity analysis. However, for the three Jedi Audits that we will be discussing today, I did want to specifically name my colleague Laura Abalera, who unfortunately could not be with us tonight. But she is the consultant who took the main lead on these three assessments and did the heavy lift while I supported the efforts just as needed. But looking at the team of four to five of us, who will be, some of who will be involved in the future audits, we collectively have 60 years of experience spanning higher education, law, workforce development and community organizing, with special focus areas in things like organizational culture and climate assessment, systems change strategy, instructional design, advocacy and policy, and then addressing identity-based harm and all of that through a diversity, equity and inclusion lens. So the purpose, and Chow had mentioned this already, but just to reiterate, the purpose in conducting equity audits is to support and enhance the city's stated commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. In general, Jedi Audits are a strategy to help organizations assess their current state. So that can be strengths and opportunities for growth, bring attention to persistent disparities, and then also to create strategic direction and accountability for progress toward respective DEI goals. Many organizations seek external consultants for this type of efforts because internal employees may not always have the capacity or knowledge to engage in such an analysis. Hence, external consultants are sought out because sometimes we can bring a unique lens based on identities and lived in professional experience as well as scholarship. External consultants can also offer a different level of objectivity and honesty oftentimes and a broader perspective that internal stakeholders might miss. And this, of course, helps in identifying gaps and providing new insights. And then lastly, employees within organizations sometimes trust external consultants more so to share information with when we do interviews. That is something that we find a lot. Just because there might be fear of retaliation or fear of even just like hurting people's feelings. And so we often are able to glean more honest and accurate data that can help us move the work forward. So as far as the scope of work goes, our Jedi Audits examine policies, programs, practices or physical and virtual spaces to provide a clearer picture of the current reality or identify barriers in equities and then recommend solutions. For the City of Rochester, the scope of work within each department was determined in collaboration with department leadership and based on their specific needs and desires. And as far as the timeline goes, I wanted to mention that the audits for the City of Rochester are essentially more narrow audits as more comprehensive analysis can take hundreds of hours, sometimes across several months and are more substantial financial investments. And also, as again you heard Chow mention, the City of Rochester has such like diverse departments and with very different missions. And so doing a broader organization level audit likely would not yield the results needed. So we are working with specific departments and our current model for these narrow audits allocates 40 hours per department. And so I just want you to keep that in perspective. That's usually an average work week, so 40 hours. And then an additional 10 hours to support each department's initial implementation of some of our suggested recommendations. Over the past year and a half, we conducted three audits, which you will hear about, Human Resources, the library, and then Parks and Recreation. And then we are in the process of launching four more audits this year. So each of these departments will provide their own overview. So I won't do that in this moment, but I did want to share a little bit about the methodology before they get into the details. So our philosophy as consultants is rooted in centering the people and communities who are most impacted by systemic harm in order to address systemic issues. And this makes things better for everyone. When we all do better, we all do better, right? And so that is a big part, the centering those who are most impacted to rise the boat for everyone. We also ground our work in principles of cultural humility. And this is a framework that we use to advance goals like equity and justice. It also incorporates an inward introspection. It's built around really meaningful relationship building and power analysis of systemic issues. We strive to provide requested feedback with honesty, love and transparency. And our approach trends heavily qualitative, relational and rooted in the power of stories and the importance of lived experiences. Our qualitative approach helps capture nuanced experiences and insights that numbers alone cannot provide. Of course, we do encourage organizations to supplement with quantitative methods, but qualitative data is critical in understanding context, emotions and complexities that quantitative data might miss. For the process, our analysis process varies for each department because these narrow audits are designed to be completely customizable and tailored to each department's unique context. So our process can include anything from reviewing policies, procedures and practices like employee handbooks or hiring and recruitment practices. It could look at website accessibility and inclusive language that we might be using or not using. Sometimes we look at programmatic updates or perform environmental scans of social media or physical spaces. We might examine mission, vision, values alignment, or conduct assessments through stakeholder dialogues and surveys. And we lean on our extensive experience in formalized education in identifying systemic issues. We also draw from industry leaders when needed and we utilize some internal benchmarks to guide our analysis, mostly questions and cues that help us identify bias, things that we might look for regarding just identity conscious analysis, language that could be outdated or discriminatory practices that might indirectly or directly impact marginalized communities. And then, of course, every methodology has its limitations. And so just to name a few common limitations of our Jedi Audits, include the potential for bias and qualitative data collection and analysis, limited scope due to the time constraints that we have to work under, and then the challenge of ensuring sustained implementation of recommendations. Because at the end of the day, we cannot compel any department to act on our recommendations. And often audits are really only as good as the leadership is ready for them or willing to engage in them. And even when or if leaders are wanting to act on recommendations as external consultants, we might not fully understand the or grasp all the nuances within organization culture or internal politics or limited resources, barriers for implementation, or like financial implications for our recommendations. So wanted to name that, but while acknowledging all of those things, competing priorities, barriers, external deterrence, we still encourage departments to creatively and courageously consider the possibilities in the short and long term, or even in reimagined contexts to better meet the needs of the people in their departments and the communities that they exist to serve. So for these audits, our focus areas for each department, they explored specific areas, which again you will get to see in a moment. But just to give you a quick snapshot on this slide, Human Resources focused on climate and culture, so conflict navigation and resolution processes. That was something that they wanted to look into. And then secondarily, employee support, which included things like inclusive benefit design, holiday and leave policies. Parks and Rec had wanted to look at targeted inclusive community engagement and outreach, as well as accountability in hiring and internal culture. And then the library concentrated on hiring, recruitment and retention guidance, along with an environmental scan of their physical and digital environments. So that's just a quick overview of what we do as consultants with these audits. I did also have just a few high-level observations that I'm happy to share. But in the interest of time and flow, I'm going to pause here and have each department come up and share some of what they have been working on through these audits. And then if there's time at the end, I can share a few of these high-level observations.
Council President, Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Lena Murphy. I'm a senior HR consultant with the HR team. I've been with the city for about six years or so. So HR was one of the first groups to be a part of this audit because of the influence our department has on the organizational climate and culture. Our function is really to serve all employees here within the City of Rochester. So our, our impact can be broad with regime. So as Amanda shared, we began our, we began our audit process by having an initial conversation with Good Enough Consulting, where we identified two primary areas for critical review. That included climate and culture and how we navigate conflict within our team. And then various types of support the organization provides all employees. And then with that, understanding that along with HR, along with administration, really manages all of our organizational policies, we asked them to review multiple existing policies. So let's first cover the largest chunk of our audit, which revolves around navigating conflict and resolutions. So we currently have several paths for conflict navigation. One is Human Resources. We really support our team and our supervisors in terms of advising, guiding employees, constructive feedback tools that they can use to continue to maintain healthy relationships within, within the workplace. We also guide the disciplinary action process, which is a more formal process. So we administer progressive discipline here at the city in order to support behavior change for an individual. This can lead directly to work performance or how they manage relationships with other folks and external customers, internal and external customers. And then thirdly, we do have a grievance process here as most of our employees are a part of a labor agreement or one bargaining unit or another. But you know, the grievance process is really about formal violations to a labor agreement. So the first recommendation here that was provided was really about praying us in HR, as well as an organization overall, to navigate conflict constructively. This included tools and how to reframe conflict from something that's always negative and needing to be avoided to a normal part of group process and collaboration. And also to really notice that, to really note that conflict becomes more complex as our spaces become more diverse, right? As we have more of a variety of voices, that conflict can be more, more difficult. The tools specifically included processes for building group understanding, implementing equitable decision-making. The second recommendation involved creating a path for hate, bias and harm reporting and intervention. This would allow us as an organization to become more aware of larger issues or common themes that are occurring throughout the organization, especially experienced by folks in underrepresented populations. This would also allow us to, you know, collect this data, have this information and assess what type of professional development needs that our community, our organization needs, what education might be needed to, to be shared widely and recommend policy and practice changes across the organization as well. Included in this recommendation was, was to create a specific response team, which I'll talk about next here. So the outcome based upon those two recommendations is what we're calling an identity-based respect process, which is currently in development still. But it is meant to provide a safe means for individuals to report experiences of identity-based issues and/or harm. A couple key elements with the IBR process is that the response team members are not just within Human Resources. That was very specific to provide a broader perspective and not to, to encourage participation and voices to be heard in that. And then while this process is meant to reside outside of that formal process that we talked about grievances and disciplinary action, we as an employer also have to be able to recognize when a claim comes in or a situation is raised to recognize that this might be something that needs to be elevated to a formal investigation to have more further formal discussion around it. As recommended though, with this, through Good Enough Consulting, this process would be confidential and would be, all claims would be reviewed by the, the IVR response team. Similarly, with the intent that we would utilize this information for further learning throughout the organization, whether that would be specifically to a department, to a division or organizationally. We had some other recommendations surrounding climate and culture too. And one of those was improving our quality of our exit interview process. One of the main recommendations was actually, we had a lot of broad questions in our exit interview and we thought that would welcome responses. But a recommendation was to have some more targeted questions to really focus on giving people a chance to respond to predetermined areas. So we have added that with the intent to, to continue to assess for patterns throughout the organizations as, as people leave. Related to this, but not around directly in the audit results, was our stay interview process. So we're in a, in a, in the process of developing a stay interview. So not just hearing from employees as they're exiting the organization, but also while they're still here, what's working, what's not working, their sense of belonging, inclusion, their relationship with their department or their supervisor and teammates as well. So again, wanting to collect that information and use that to inform our decisions in terms of education and policy. And then another recommendation was around gender support planning. So establishing a shared understanding and expectations around gender support. So we created a template letter that employees could access in order to help them communicate if they are going through a gender transition with their departments, with their teammates as well. And another piece that's kind of auxiliary to that is that we have had IT and several other departments have been working on a chosen name process. So that is, has been implemented. So employees starting with the city or currently already employed with the city can go through a process to have their chosen name, show up in Microsoft Teams, email, that sort of thing. So we continue to look at ways to make sure that dead names don't appear when, when they don't need to be, need to appear. The next category encompasses our benefit design and employee support offerings. So recommendations included alcohol and drug abuse programs and recovery support, paid time for this, for this leave, and then also expanding definitions around relationships for grief and, and healing time. So I will share that the city does currently, the city does, Health Plan currently does cover gender affirmative care as well as drug abuse programming, inpatient care, I'll say. And then with that too, there are available leave times for that. Another note was that they suggested that we have affinity groups. We currently have affinity groups, which are also known as employee resource groups. We actually have six groups currently, including a DEI group, an emotional wellbeing group and a social justice group as well. And then some additional benefits that we implemented included the Juneteenth holiday, as well as flexible leave, which would be allowed to be used for bereavement and individual holiday observances. One other thing that I'd like to also highlight here, that not directly from the audit, but something that we've implemented in Human Resources, is our, our language in job postings. So we all have, we have minimum qualifications to be eligible to be considered for, for a role. We still had that language, but we were also really encouraging folks to apply and noting that we're not only looking for technical expertise, but also lived experiences. So that adds an extra layer of work, I'll say, in terms of reviewing those applications. But it's, it's one way for us to hopefully encourage more folks to see themselves working here at the city. And then finally, we asked Good Enough Consulting to review four policies as well as a core value statement. So you can see those are listed. So you can see those are listed there. These policies that we asked are really related to employee conduct and how teammates interact with what each other, expectations around behavior. Also, these policies address conflict in the workplace. So it seemed to go kind of hand in hand with that identity based respect process as well. Recommendations included having just more descriptive language in our policies, providing examples whenever possible, removing gendered language. That's, we, we have a lot of policies that just haven't been looked at in a while. So that was an easy one, but removing that gendered language. So we are implementing those, those changes as well. Some recommendations that we weren't actually, have not actually implemented is including consent of the impacted individual in terms of investigating a complaint as well as keeping all complaints anonymous. So while we would certainly try to keep information confidential, there's, we have some limitations to that. And also by, once we as an employer hear that there might be a complaint or an allegation of harassment, a violation of city policy or state or federal law, we do have an obligation to investigate that. So, so you know, navigating that where we do want to center that impacted individual, but knowing that we have to also be mindful of the risk to the city too. Let's see. So, and you know, going forward, well, having gone through this audit, we'll certainly continue to apply this lens as we review all of our future policy updates. One other item that I'd like to just note too, again, related somewhat to, to this is that we updated our performance evaluation process, meaning we added a new category to our performance evaluation for all employees. So we have a category called inclusive workplace and belonging, which is, which is our way to show our commitment that all employees have a, have a, should be making this a priority and are being held accountable to ensuring through their actions, words, that they're creating an inclusive space for everyone. That's all I have. I'll pass it over to Karen Ness.
All right. Good afternoon, Council President Carlson, Mayor Norton, members of council. We were really excited to be one of the first departments to be able to do one of these Jedi audits. We really value having that objective view at what we do and what our practices are because it can be hard to give honest feedback. So having Good Enough review what we're doing for our hiring practices, coming and taking like a secret shopper visit through the library and then also conducting this staff survey was really, really beneficial. We selected those three activities really because right now we know that we lack diversity, especially with full-time teammates and in our leadership. And so that's why we really wanted to focus on the hiring practices and how we could improve those. They reviewed our job descriptions, reviewed what our process was and our procedures were for hiring, looked at our interview questions and also looked at the makeup of our hiring teams. Currently, we really have limited representation on our, on our teams because they are primarily full-time teammates. So one of the recommendations that they had for us was to add part-time teammates, add other teammates to our hiring teams, which we've been able to do recently on some of our newer, more recent hiring teams. We received lots of feedback. We have, if you talk to anybody who works for the city, they've say, they will tell you that it takes a while to get a job with the city, that the process is really long and we've known that. But it was really good to hear from, again, Good Enough telling us that yes, the process may be long, but even just including that information along the way and having clear communication when people are in the process is really, really important. They also recommended that we share our interview questions ahead of time, which is something that we have already implemented as well in our last hiring for librarian. Better get that. And it was very, very successful to offer those ahead of time and it made the interview process much more successful and, and welcoming for our, for our folks participating. For the environmental scan, like I mentioned, they did, Laura and teammate did a visit to the library and acted as though they were secret shoppers, talked to our staff at the desks and asked questions. From that, they did identify that we currently have no gender neutral bathrooms, which is against something that we realize that we don't have. But it's nice having that objective view of how important that is. They also noted that it's hard to provide feedback because they, they did look at our website as well. So not just our physical spaces, but took a tour of the website and interacting with us digitally. And we do have a hard time getting that feedback digitally, so making that much more accessible. They also noted that we do have a limited amount of information about our commitment to equity at the library, even though equity is one of our, one of our goals. And you know, we like to promote that all are welcome, yet we don't have a page on our website about our commitment and the things that we're doing at the library. And again, that was that honest feedback that is harder to get. And, and when you're, when you're in your own organization, you might not recognize. They did make some recommendations about offering more things to address harm reduction and poverty, like offering Narcan and safe sex kits and also offering a lawyer in the library. We do have a social worker that does come to the library once a week. We also have members of the drug and alcohol response team that do come to the library once a week. But that is, is limited and you wouldn't know that if you're just visiting the library as a secret shopper. And then there was a recommendation to avoid religious displays that we've had in the front of our building that our, our friends have had with their friends' book sales. And, and then they also made a recommendation that we should be offering pronoun pins, which we normally do, but we, they are often quite popular and we often run out. So another part of what we did, which was a really valuable piece of our project is we conducted a staff survey. So after the initial review of our hiring practices and the secret shopper visit to the library, Good Enough provided a report, which we shared with staff. They were able to read through that report. Laura came and did a staff meeting with us. And then they sent out a survey, which was really great. Again, because all of the responses were going to Good Enough and not to HR. They weren't coming to library leadership directly. So folks were very honest and very raw in their responses. They reiterated a lot of things in the staff survey. In the hiring piece itself, they talked a lot about that. It was really complicated and long and confusing. They also really appreciated the idea of sharing questions ahead of time. We had many in our staff who said that that would have been very beneficial to themselves. We had some feedback that we do need better onboarding. We pride ourselves in being a learning organization, but we need to do better in our onboarding process and even have a welcome packet with information about, you know, where to park and where the break rooms are. Those things that we forget about when we're no longer new employees. And then as Lena mentioned, there is a chosen name process, but they also noted, our teammates noted that there are some improvements that need to be made with that process, that sometimes dead names are showing up or incorrect names are showing up and we are working, we are already working on that. Lena and I are working with IT about how to make that better and how to make sure that we're catching those issues when, when they're happening. As far as the environmental scan, staff really did reiterate that those all gender bathrooms are a necessity and it is something that the building is lacking. We think that this will be something that possibly will be addressed in the library study. So we know that this issue, as well as just even maneuvering through the library, which is very challenging right now, there are spaces where it's really hard to maneuver in a wheelchair, both if you're a customer and if you are working in the library. And staff noted that, that it's really hard to get through some of our spaces and that throughout the library accessibility really needs to be addressed. The registration table is something that they noted about not being very accessible. So if you want to come in and get a library card, then you can't, it's not self-service if you're in a wheelchair. And so we are already having conversations about how we can get a sit-stand desk, an adjustable desk or an arm that, that holds an iPad so folks can use that. There was a lot of appreciation for our safety and security position that just started. And then appreciation for our maintenance teammates, but there have been a lot of messes that folks have had to clean up our maintenance team. And so there was concern also for our maintenance folks that they have a lot to do and their, their work has been particularly challenging. And then some other comments in the staff survey, some struggle with the seven day work schedule. Moving to that year round seven day schedule has been challenging. That there's still, we're not back to our pre-pandemic level of engagement with one another, that there's really a desire to do more team building and more building of that cross-division teamwork. And so that's something that we need to work on and to continue to break down those silos. There's a lot of interest and support for those state interviews and also for exit interviews. And then again, the chosen name process was noted as an area that needs improvement. So for us, for the next steps, we know again, the physical spaces will be looked at in the library study. But we are trying to address some of those interim fixes, like the adjustable desk. And then we really want to form a library accessibility committee. We are privileged to have four teammates who are in wheelchairs, who can provide us some better information than, than folks who are not using wheelchairs and can address, identify some of the challenges that we have in the building. And so we're working to form that committee. And then we'll work with HR to address some of those hiring challenges and the, develop a more consistent process for our hiring so that we can hopefully move folks through our process faster, anything that we can do on our end. And then we are, are looking at different ways that we can provide more collaboration and some cross-division engagement for our teammates. So those are the items that we have and I'll turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Karen.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor and Council members. I, I want to start out just by putting a, a brief highlight on our system-wide master plan that was conducted in 2015 and how it relates and has evolved as this work in DEI has progressed. The delivery guidelines in that plan place a great emphasis on inclusion and belonging and distributing the Parks and Recreation System equitably throughout the city. And our most recent success in this area has been the completion of several projects related to Phase One, Master Plan Projects at Soldier's Field. And I just wanted to highlight that it is our best example of community engagement in, in a project of any scale in Parks and Recreation. A great deal of engagement, but not only that, but we worked with Chow, the consultant, and Jenna in, in the process to make sure we had community representation, looking at our entire population to make sure that there were people there who are traditionally not part of the decision-making process. And as you recall, the opening media event, there were several of those who were involved in the, in the community design process that were there, very proud of the work that they accomplished, at which they should be. If you look at what they recommended, the layout of the facility, the, the access to the facility as mentioned. If you think of, just think of any parent-child dyad or, or a group, a parent with two or three children. The previous addition of the changing rooms and locker rooms did not help that at all. And then carry that out to the entire population. We, we now can get people through that facility comfortably and safely. And that, that's a huge accomplishment in this work. Well, I wanted to share that before we talked about the audit to let you know that we do have some success. And the key takeaway from the, I'm going the wrong way here. Oh, no, I'm not. The slide, okay. Threw me off there. Doesn't take much to throw me off. The, I wanted to start out with the kickoff meeting we had with Laura Abalera, working with Good Enough Consultants. And it was a very informative meeting. We, we had just finished some of this work with Soldier's Field as well as Silver Lake in community engagement. There was a lot of excitement. Our team expressed a lot of commitment. They also shared some of their concerns about having enough capacity to meet expectations. And that was kind of the theme as we went through our discussion. You've already, already have heard the focus areas that came out of that discussion, inclusivity and community engagement and accountability, hiring and strengthening our internal culture. The first recommendation that I want to talk about is fairly bold. You've heard some bold recommendations and that is that we bring on a teammate that is, primary responsibility would be inclusivity and community outreach and they would also be involved in community engagement. And as I said, that's a bold recommendation. You're not likely to see a request for that position, but as Laura said, you're going to see our team courageously and creatively take that on and, and continue to look at ways that we can increase our capacity. Some of the areas in the current state, I'm going to go through those rather quickly. Dropping down, we, we have some unique challenges in, in our department as opposed to a lot of other departments of cities with, in cities of our population. We do, the majority of all of our programs are delivered through partnership. And we have some great examples of where we're working cooperatively in the area of DEI with partnerships and others where it's more like we're brokering space. And so we don't have a lot of engagement with those groups. Not to say that they aren't doing a great job. It's just that, that we, we have some distance and we have some progress to make in how we approach those partnerships. And this recommendation came as a way of having someone onboard who could really work with those partnerships. Some of the other highlights there, we met all of the, during our recent accreditation process, we met every standard related to accessibility and inclusivity. That was great news. To the same time, we recognized there's probably more consistency that needed to be applied across the department. And so those, we developed some of the scope of the position, but again, those can be worked in, in our, our current efforts. The next area that we discussed was accountability. It's our next focus area, accountability, hiring and strengthening the internal culture. There, there's, I think, a lot of the ideas shared with HR and library. We, we, we had some of the same discussions and identified some of the same needs. But we just really wanted to, again, strengthen our partnerships, make some of the resources we have as teammates accessible to our, our partners who provide programs so that we have that kind of consistency across whether it's a partnership, whether it's city staff delivering the program, that there's consistency and just that that is invisible to, to the participant. And so with that, our next steps in Parks and Recreation, we are using this information to inform how we approach our action planning, not only DEI, but across all program areas, maintenance. We're looking at just how we tell our story. Recent example, you know that we have storms that did a lot of damage on trails, trees. We, we want to make sure that we aren't just addressing the, the trees and the damage that people call. Usually people that have the resources are the ones that call us, those that don't wait, waited out. We know that and, and we want to do a better job of that. And, and then if, and just making sure that we're, have data to show how we do respond and where we do respond. And we're, we're doing a much better job of that. Earlier today, we talked about parking. I was able to show with data just how that's impacting and programs. And so we're, we, we are using the tools we have to, to make a difference. So those are really where our next steps lie is just evolving and moving this work along. And with that, I'll turn it back to Chow. Thank you.
So thank you for listening to that. I just did want to highlight that we were fortunate enough to have a council that approved to have four Jedi audits this coming year. And we've been thoughtful about how to do that in the best way possible. If you've been in Rochester for about five minutes, you know, If you've been in Rochester for about five minutes, you know about all of the development that's coming our way. And so in this next two Jedi audits starting out in July, the Community Development and Public Works. So having those, that team that is highly engaged in that process, be thoughtful about some of the work that they're doing, some of their processes with another two that will begin in September through the end of the year. And I'm still going through being thoughtful about what that means. But really happy about all of the work that we're seeing currently. Looking at the HR work and all the policies that have evolved even in the last two years. And thinking what that means if we're able to go through all of the departments in our organization in the next maybe five or six years. But I did want to provide an opportunity to Amanda to offer high level observations and then maybe some questions from you. Would be great.
Thank you. And I'll just name a few to keep this quick, but I wanted to mention that I have been leading some of the professional development with the city of Rochester. And so that has been, kind of offers a unique perspective when doing the audits as well, where Laura had took, taken the lead on these three audits. I was able to offer some support and also just some backend feedback and data that we are also getting from professional development and just those interactions. Or sometimes we'll have exit surveys after each session. And so that has helped us get a little bit even broader viewpoints and in what we are able to offer for recommendations. As far as just even, just wanted to name some of the boldness, I think. You know, I mean, it's, it's only bold if we aren't forward thinking. And I think lots of times what we do is we look to industry leaders, right? And what are some of the best practice, practices that are happening and especially on the national level? And what could be possible here? And, and maybe some of these things aren't possible in the immediate term, but something to work toward as far as just like this is what some of the people on the forefront of justice, equity, diversity, inclusion are doing within governmental spaces. But one of the things I'll just mention was there was lots of kind of difficulties in streamlining some of the DEI goals or assessing progress or even communicating and sharing strategies. And I think, and hopefully some of these audits could help departments prioritize and try to set some strategic direction for that. But it is, it is like difficult work if you aren't familiar with that work and it takes a lot of intentionality. I think there's a point where it just becomes like this is who we are and this is how we like are able to see the world. But getting to that point can be really difficult and take a lot of like education and training and, and skill. And so I, I think that is something to look at within these departments. We always say like equity is everybody's work, right? We all need to be doing it, but I like to think of it as a bus, right? Like if this is our stated value as an organization, everybody needs to be on the bus, but someone needs to be driving the bus. And you have a really incredible person within the city of Rochester with that designated title Director of DEI, which is Chow, which should be an absolute point of pride because not everyone has that. And at the same time, that's a heavy lift for one person. And so really looking at some of these departments and if it isn't necessarily a, a new position, like how do we create, take some people that we have within these departments and find like leadership within each department as well to support some of this work? The second thing that I'll name is just retention. And I want to acknowledge that I don't have actual data on this as this was not something that we were tasked with looking at. But just as, as an external observer and just meeting people along the way and then, and then they're gone, I've noticed, I'm curious about, I'll say, just some retention within the city of Rochester, especially with our marginalized and minoritized employees. And so that is something that I would like us to look at more closely. And maybe as we continue working with human resources, that is something that we can look to. We already talked about the exit, exit interviews, but maybe making sure that is a more robust process. And what are we doing to address the, the information that we get from those exit interviews? Another thing transparently, it was disheartening to see some of the struggles as we visited the library and what I'm talking about with struggles, like issues like climate control, accessibility concerns, infrastructure that made navigation like difficult. And that's just to name a few. There's a lot more that came from the report and just internal employees' survey responses. But I say disheartening because especially within such a wealthy community, I think that was a little bit shocking to us to, to observe that. And libraries are such a crucial part of a community and they are often like hubs and leaders when it comes to inclusivity. And so this is something that I think, like looking at that closer and it sounds like there already is going to be a more comprehensive audit of, of the physical space. But really figuring out a way to update the building, especially in ways that go beyond ADA compliance, would have a far reaching impact for the entire organization as well as the diverse population that that library serves. And then I also just wanted to mention just immense gratitude for everyone that I've gotten to work with, but especially Chow and her commitment, her vision, her patience and dedication. As a consultant, I usually have a point person that I work most closely with. And so Chow is my person here at the city of Rochester and she is unmatched when it comes to the leadership and dedication and the vision. And it is something that you all should be incredibly proud of. And the leaders and the departments that I got to work with were just, it was so great to have them really lean in and be so receptive. It's hard to get feedback, right? I mean, we tried to name, like here's some really great things that are happening. You didn't get to hear that necessarily today. But of course, some of the work is to uncover like what are the gaps and where can we do better? And they were super responsive and receptive to that feedback. And so it's been wonderful to work with them. And just as I look across other organizations that I have partnerships with, I point to you all as a model to the city of Rochester many times with just, it's so comprehensive what you all are trying to do from the professional development, from just like what is our stated commitment? And how are we making meaning of that? How is every department going to uphold that? How can we support our people and upskill them through professional development? How can we do specific audits? I mean, it's just very comprehensive and I don't see that in many of the organizations that I work with. So I wanted to name that as well as just my, my final high level overview. And so with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you so much for that. Chow, do you want to join us? All right, we'll start with Councilmember Bransford.
It's really not a question. It's more of a shout out to Park and Recs in particular, Able Rec. One thing we didn't talk about is our most vulnerable, vulnerable population, i.e. those with special needs, both physical and mental. Park and Rec hits it out of the park. Able Rec is just top notch. And I've seen that because I have a daughter with, with a disability and, and so I kind of have a bird's eye view. But really that's, I think that's an important shout out that they do an amazing job in a community with multiple levels of people with a bunch of different kinds of disabilities and they've just done a great job. So, thank you.
Karen Norton. Couple of things. A, thank you for the kind words about Chow. It's one of the things that I take the most pride in since I've been mayor. I'm thrilled with the work that she's doing and I'm glad you called her out because she's quite, I don't know, quiet about her own skillset, which is immense. And I'm thrilled that we have her here. I'm also thrilled that you, about, to hear more about exit interviews because one of the things, you know, that comes up at this table periodically because we are people who hear from our community as elected officials is that sometimes we hear about the one or two really bad experiences that happen and it happens behind the scene. And that's really difficult because you don't want to be, you don't want to be bad mouthing our city because of a, a bad experience, but you also don't want to find out that there were other bad experiences that no one checked into. So I'm very pleased that we're going to be doing more exit interviews and follow up and find out what those concerns are and address them proactively rather than having, you know, finger pointing after the fact. That's just not healthy for an organization. So thank you for that. That's been huge. And my question really is, we have a Jacob Metz who's here, back in the back, who's here from Harvard doing some work in this area. And I'm wondering how you're incorporating what he's learning and how he's working with all of you, because I haven't heard anything about that. And I, and I know a little bit of the work he's doing and I just wonder how that all blends together.
Thank you, Mayor, for your question. And maybe Jacob would speak for himself, but I'm happy to, to join in here. He has been working with each department specifically on the accessibility plan and was quite excited about the library, talking about having their own team. So his work is incorporated into a lot of the work that we're doing. He also did participate in the cultural humility professional development that all of our teammates are going through so that his work is informed by the same learning that the rest of the organization is going through. So he's been, the work that he's doing has been really valuable, continues to be valuable. Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. The three Good Enough reports were far more comprehensive than could possibly be addressed in an hour tonight. How is the three departments that were represented tonight chose to act on specific parts of those reports?
I think that's where we found the, so much value in that employee survey. That really did reiterate what's, what is rising to the top. Our leadership team is meeting in a couple of weeks to prioritize. It's a, it's a very lengthy spreadsheet. Some of them, it will be, you know, can we do this budget neutral, your favorite words, right? Can we do this without any funding? Can we just do this? Other things, it's going to be much more, more comprehensive. How can we start planning ahead now to make a change and, and make a budget request a couple of years from now? So it, it's a little daunting and overwhelming for us. We relied on our, our staff feedback that we got. And I do, I do want to shout out to Jacob because he's been instrumental for the library in particular. And he has been part of our, he helped us put together our RFP. He's still working as part of our, our committee that's doing the library study and we're very appreciative of him. And that we were able to, right away when we had this strong feedback, particularly about our registration desk, we, we had somebody to call. And that was so impactful and, and I think it speaks volumes to our teammates who know that there's someone in the city that's working specifically on accessibility. So.
The, the area that comes to mind for Parks and Recreation is partnerships, strengthening our partnerships. And that came from going through the accreditation process, have the credit reviewers discover us as a very unique department because of all the partnerships we have. And so that's, as you saw on the slide, opportunities and challenges. We don't have a lot of, of direct impact on every, every coach and every, every, everyone involved in, in some of the programs out there. But we do have a lot of say on, you know, use of the facilities and we can use those standards we developed through the Jedi Audit and through CAPRA to communicate and get the partnerships onboard in a very positive way.
Lena, did you want to add?
I know. Well, I would say, you know, all of the, all of the things, we wanted to implement everything, right? But it's that managing, balancing what we can do. So honestly, looking at like quick wins, some of those policy changes are within our scope. Those things like that identity based respect, that's been lots of conversations around how we can effectively implement that. So it was just really balancing that and also knowing that within HR, we have various challenges that we hear from employees. Oftentimes we're hearing things that maybe their department isn't or their supervisor isn't hearing. So taking that feedback and trying to effectively implement the results of that audit is how we just kind of navigated that.
And I would also add, Councilmember Wall, a lot of snowballing. So like, for example, HR started out with what they thought would be one or two recommendations, but then ended up doing above and beyond and then becoming, oh, adding their own equity lens. So they'll come up with, oh, do you think this next thing needs to be addressed? That maybe might not have been in that original scope. But you know how it is, kind of like a project, you start one thing and realize you need to do the next one. So that has been good to see.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the audit. This has been really great. And thank you to the three teams that, that went first. Specifically Laura, you mentioned, I, I don't believe your word was disadvantages, but at the end, the, some of the environmental stressors that I know the library has had, some of the physical issues that Parks and Rec has had to deal with. And these folks step up to the plate every day. We have weather challenges that no one can control. And they're bound by finances and what they can do and human capacity. The changes that the library has undergone with issues that are out of their control repeatedly over the last couple of years. And they step up to the plate. So I just want to say kudos. And I don't want to leave the other, the other teammates out that will be going through the Jedi audits too. But I just know because of the time I spend at the library specifically, but also with Parks and Rec, just kudos to everybody that's there stepping up and, and doing that work day in and day out and making the city shine with your efforts. So thank you.
I think this is just a really good step in the work that we're doing. And it's really nice that we have some support for Chow and knowing that this is a team effort, but also bringing in that consultant that, to bring that outside perspective. I think we think about the library as one of the most inclusive spaces in our community and staff are part of the reason that's the case, absolutely. But there's, there is so much room to grow and improve. And I think it's that key word of accountability, that there's accountability in our leadership in our city that are open to hearing the feedback, even if it's hard, and being committed to figuring out how to move forward. So thank you to all, all of you. And Lena, thank you so much for having HR go through this as one of our first because the, the reach within the organization is so broad. And it's just really exciting to hear about what you're learning and, and thinking of moving forward with. So thank you. I will turn it over to Councilmember Dennis.
All right. Thank you so much. I, I echo a lot of what's been said here. So I know, well, I just thank you. I definitely want to make sure, say thank you. I think people are really critical about consultants because we're like, oh, property tax, we're adding on. You know, we have people who aren't necessarily big on spending extra money, but having that outside view that's not afraid to be critical. And I feel, and I'm a Pollyanna kind of by, by nature and very optimistic. But when it comes to, like you mentioned, addressing problems and barriers and disparities, it, a lot of people feel they don't want to be retaliated against. And, and so to have someone come in and, you know, really be confidential, it's so important. So I just want to thank you. I'm a big fan of consultants in this specific situation. Other departments, I think we can do better working in home, you know, you know, with our work with staff and departments. But, but, um, so what, what I'm, want a couple of things. I know we didn't take questions through each department, so I have a couple for different departments here, questions. Trying to condense, I took a lot of notes while talking, of course, reviewed and researched ahead of time. But one of the things, when we talked about the exit interviews, I think are great, follow up. People are more raw and transparent. They can say, I quit, I'm done, I'm moving out of Rochester because this is wrong, 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 wrong. And we can get the real honest truth. I think that's great. But when you talk about retention, so that it doesn't come to that state, you know, that's a little harder because I have heard firsthand from people in who have reached out from different departments of the city saying this is an issue, but you know, we don't want to bring it up because, you know, we don't want to be retaliated against. And, and I know that's a huge fear. I know from people telling that to me. So what has been done to prevent that for current employees who know if they bring up an issue, their employee, their supervisor is going to link them to that issue. It's going, you know, there's small departments, you know, working close. If you have something, it's not hard for intelligent people to connect dots. What is being done to really protect those employees so that they can bring up the barriers that need to be addressed?
And I can start and I think Karen can add to it. One of the things they talked about here was about the state interviews and working through that process and having an opportunity for teammates to articulate barriers or even strengths. Like why are they choosing to continue to work for the city and what's working well? But also identifying what might be a barrier for somebody, right? And having those addressed while folks are still here. But the other part that was mentioned by Lena was the identity based respect process, which has a layer of anonymity to it, right? So that it's not identifiable if somebody were to fill out that form or go through that process to share a concern that they might have or an experience that they have, they might have that will then be addressed, either through education or if it's elevated to a different level addressed that way. So there's that portion. The HR team has also done a, done a really great job of doing surveys. I believe it is once every two years for the larger survey. Those are anonymous. Teammates are able to respond to those and share their experiences as well as additional pulse surveys. I think those are every six months where teammates are able to add information to that. So they have various opportunities throughout, some that are anonymous, actually most of which are anonymous, where they can share experiences. And I don't say that to say that it is perfect. We are always seeking to improve that process and to make sure that we have a perfect balance of, one, having space and processes for people to report, balancing actually doing something about it, because folks want to be able to assign something and have it be addressed, but also holding a level of accountability. something and have it be addressed, but also holding a level of accountability. So making sure there's a balance in all of those three things. I hope that answers it. I don't know. Erin, you want to add to that at all?
Yeah, Chow, I think you did an amazing job covering, you know, that. And maybe the only extensions of is just, you know, sometimes it does take conflicts in order to work through issues and bring them forward. And, you know, so I think that is part of it. And I think a lot of that is really about creating the right environment to have those conversations and the right trust environment, and just amplifying what Chow said about our, every other year, employee engagement survey, to the extent that there is concerns. I mean, that is confidential. We do see trends. They are reported out, you know, depending on the size of groups. We don't go too small with those, but depending on the size of groups, you know, you do see themes and issues, you know, that can be then targeted and, you know, talked about and, you know, create the right kind of conversations around that. And we ask departments to plan around, you know, that engagement data. So I think there are a variety of mechanisms, but at the end of the day too, we don't want to also underscore the need to engage in that conflict and to kind of grow through it together.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in. I want to ask something about the affinity groups I'm just going to move into. But just on a follow-up with that, I just, I've done a lot of research on toxic work environments and harassment and stuff. And one of the most detrimental forms of harassment by far is ostracism, because at least harassment, people are harassing you and causing you, you know, issues. But ostracism is like you don't exist, like we're not going to work with you, we're not going to talk to you. And that is the most, what my research and what I've looked at, is the most terrible form of retaliation is when people that you work with will not work with you because of issues. So I just wanted to say that's something I know in all departments and all work, that is what the studies have said, but a toxic work environment is the cold shoulder as a form of, you know, pushback. So just want to point that out because that's, I think, very important, definitely for the council as well. But I want to move into affinity groups. And I know relationship grieving, I think that's great. You're broadening relationships. I know people have so many different relationship connections and depth. What allows departments to honor that time off? Because I know library staff versus park staff versus RPU, you can go any department, some are so essential, you know, to be able to take time off. Is there some kind of protection or going to be looked at to implementing that if they do have a loved one or an extending grief time, that regardless of their position with the city, they are guaranteed that?
Lena, do you want to pick this one?
When you mentioned affinity groups, so within the policy itself, employees are allowed to take time off to participate in those affinity groups. The affinity groups themselves actually schedule around what's convenient for them. So many groups meet during the lunch hour if that's most convenient. They do via Teams in order to try to be more sensitive to that work schedule as well. And then you mentioned like time off for grief. Yeah, I guess maybe I'm reading things that aren't there. That's not part of this, is extra time off for, or like if the grieving process lasts longer, you know, some people aren't ready to come back after. Yeah, so we have a bereavement policy that allows time off. And so it's also going to look at that union contract. We are in the process of implementing PTO for certain groups, and that also allows that flexibility to use additional time off for bereavement as well. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. And then just a couple more, I guess. I can, some of this I can, you know, talk about. I just want to do a call out for the parks too. I'm jumping around here, the parks, the Soldier's Field, obviously, I've mentioned I went there. And think amazing thoughts about the accessibility and all the inclusiveness, and so thank you. But the economic barriers, I think, are part of the DEI world, where you have people who are just struggling to participate in, let's say, the pool and other things. Has that been part of this study too, not just what we think of as maybe DEI, but economic?
Yeah, I should, President and Councilmembers, Mayor, I should have mentioned that in my discussion. It wasn't so much part of the Jedi Audit, although there were recommendations about equity in regards to economic barriers. When we went through the design process for Soldier's Field Pool for the Aquatic Center, that was one of the key recommendations of that group. The swim club and our team took that to heart. Right now, there are several service providing organizations. If individuals or households show that they're involved in those groups, they can get free or reduced access to the Aquatic Center. If they are not and they can share some kind of, yeah, something that shows that they're economically challenged, they send an email to the swim club, they process it, they are given the same consideration, free or reduced admission.
I think, yeah, that's, I appreciate that. I think sometimes the steps are barriers too, when you have to go through a process if you're, but yes, I appreciate. That's wonderful.
Yeah, it's as streamlined as we can make it. Association with several of the groups, service providers provides us the background we need. Others, it's a very simple process.
And I just have two quick more. These are, one, I'm not sure if this has something been looked at. When you talked about lived and expert experience, and, you know, there's so many different, I mean, from my lived experience with autism, ADHD, and we have hidden disabilities, and, you know, definitely so much lived experiences on the council and in our departments. I have seen happen with, I'm thinking of a specific situation with the library, library staff that had occurred, where there was a lot of online bullying that happened because of things that, you know, like, and, has there any been looking at that as, you know, protection harassed, like from harassment, from not just in the city, but in the community, when someone speaks up and does what is right, you know, takes a stand, speaks up against injustice, takes a stand? I'm thinking of this particular situation where did what was right, I believe, but got, you know, is there a way of finding police intervention? I know there's ULRs, or I don't, I guess maybe I'm not really techie with finding out where the harassment is coming from. What's being done in the growing world of tech that will help protect people from retaliation for them whistleblowing or standing up for things?
I guess maybe I would ask just a clarifying question. Are you referencing someone on this library's website doing something or on their Facebook page or on their own?
In the community, the community. I'm just saying, like something, I guess I, I'm thinking of a specific situation, but I'm sure, you know, when there's one that's out there, there's a lot that are hidden too. And I know from experience and from, you know, other people maybe have that experience, where it is, it is hard, you know, it's one thing to address HR when it's a person-to-person conflict, but then if it's like, oh, well, a staff and staff and then an outside, and I don't know, has that been looked at with really protecting and making, you know, welcoming safe environment for people to feel like their personal lives, their lived experiences, who they are, are protected as an employee for doing their work here at the city?
I guess I would say if someone has a concern about that, they should likely talk to their supervisor or their HR business partner to share what the concern is so that they could work through that process or go through the process with the group that's being formed. Something's happening specifically at the library. We do have an ability to address that and make sure that people are safe at the library. It does get more challenging, as you point out, if someone has their own, you know, you have their own personal Facebook page, for example, and they're sharing some things, there's some personal responsibility that if you're sharing that, you may receive challenging responses. And I will just say that overall, from the city's social media perspective, we have had some really unfortunate responses on some of the inclusive posts that we've been trying to include. And so we are talking as staff, and very soon in the future, we'll likely be going to one-way communication and broadcast communication because the intent has been for inclusivity. We don't monitor those. And then when people see it, and we've, you know, celebrated, for example, Pride Month, and there's been really hateful comments, it's actually had the opposite effect of what its goal is. And we have a lot of other ways that people can reach us. And so rather than create the forum for that challenging conversation, when that's not the intent, they can still like, they can still share on their own page and create their own forum if they would like to. But really trying to make sure that our employees and visitors are protected from that, and our community members who are really, find that, like, we've had people reach out, for example, to the mayor who've said they've felt safe living here as an immigrant, for example, for 15 or 20 years. And after seeing some of the conversations on those posts, they no longer feel very safe in Rochester. So when we have those types of things, we do sometimes have to make those difficult calls. And I think a good example of growth is that I think all the departments have come together to, we have a lot of social media channels to be supportive of making that change.
And that's, I think, a growing, thank you. I'm glad that, I'm glad it's being addressed because that's, the online bullying situation is becoming epidemic in our country. So, but the last question, and I'm sorry, I've asked a lot of questions, but there's a lot, there's a lot to cover. But last question is the biggest frustration, I think, for a lot of people when they have consultants come in, is that it gets a feel-good response, where it looks good on paper. We're like, oh, great, 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 we're doing great, our city's great, let's promote, we're doing DEI. But when it comes to actually implementing these programs, it just doesn't happen. I've seen it firsthand not happening with trainings, consultants at the city council. I've seen it happen. So I know that it doesn't follow three. They said, this is what we should do. Everyone's like, yay, 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 during these things. And then it dies. And, and we still have it on paper. We did it, right? Check, check, check. Look, everyone. But what is making sure that this has been implemented? I mean, this stuff that, the recommendations, I mean, of course, we need buy-in from all the departments and things. What kind of accountability do we have that your wonderful work, and of course, the taxpayer dollars that funded your wonderful work, is being used efficiently?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Dennis. And I think this is, hopefully, the most beautiful part about this particular relationship is the idea that I work with departments to help them prioritize and scope areas that would like evaluated, make the connection of the consultants. She goes through that process, as well as the 10 hours of additional implementation towards the end to allow them to get started. But then I'm here to support the departments as they go forward. So whether that item shows up in their DEI action plan going forward, which is something that exists, and we have quarterly checks on that to make sure that they are keeping up with those goals, whether it might be like HR with a policy that they then update that policy, right? So we're actually seeing that actionable change. But I think that's the part maybe that falls on me in my role, but also the departments. And the department heads wonderful teammates who have committed to doing this work. The question of what are you going to do with the recommendations that you have received? And what you're not able to implement now, is it because it is impossible altogether? Or is it something that you need to prioritize for a later date, right? Or is it something that requires budget? So we have all of those conversations after the report recommendations with follow-up on implementation and future planning.
That's going to come back to the, that's going to come back to the council then to say, we, this is what we learned at the study session, and then later on, this is what we've done in actual, like, is that going to come back just for, for the public to see that it's actually, you know, we, I love, I love what you're saying, and I trust what you're saying, because I know you, and I know that you, with all your intention, this is going to happen. But when it comes to actually, you know, things moving forward, is that coming back?
It may, may come back, but not always. Like I said earlier, you know, part of the best part of my job is that I get to work with all these different departments. So something that might change, might show up in a very different item to council, maybe a year later, six months later, whether it's, like I said, like a policy update or a change to an ordinance. And maybe we can make a better effort of saying, hey, as a result of going through the Jedi Audit, this item then shows up in the public works ordinance that comes to you, or Soldier's Field master planning efforts. So a lot of the work that we do in this Jedi Audit or in our DI action plans might show up in a very different way when it comes to you, and not necessarily always mentioned as a result of a DI action plan or a Jedi Audit update. So I said yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to add that there are 10 hours for implementation support, which was not initially part of the idea. And so that, again, comes back to Chow and other leadership within the city, was just that, like, we don't want to just have, like, here's this report recommendations, good luck. But they actually asked us to, like, can you help us start with the implementation? And that is something that is different from other partnerships that I've been a part of. And so I really appreciate that part of the, within the scope, right? It's 40 hours of audit, and there's 10 hours for us as consultants to help start that implementation. And I think there's always conversations about, like, just transparency, I think is helpful, right? It's not the end-all, be-all accountability, but as we are sharing more, there, sometimes people are listening sometimes, and then it's like, what did you do with it? And so I wanted to name that. And there was one more thing I was going to say, implementation, shoot, now I lost it. But yeah, I think that is a really important piece that, that I'm proud to be a part of. Oh, I know. And as consultants, and especially consultants that have been with you all for, I think we're in year three now, we're building relationships, and we care deeply about the work and the people, and have met some, like, incredible people, right? And that is something that we take really seriously. And so even with the library, we ran out of hours for implementation support. And so Laura, again, my colleague, who mostly led these efforts as I've been doing more of the professional development, she just donated 10 hours for the implementation because we just care so deeply. And so we, we will do what we can to at least, like, help get that started. But yeah, and then it's just continued conversations with Chow and others to make sure that something comes of it. So thank you for your question.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your work.
And I assume some of these strategies will be built into the departmental work plans, and that we would see them in the form of potential budget requests. And, but a lot of them are administrative changes that are happening within the departments that certainly don't need council approval, but hopefully there's clear council support for each department continuing to move forward. Thank you so much.
Any final comments? All right. Well, thanks to your team. I will turn it over to Ms. Alms for the study session schedule update.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers. Mayor, yeah, that was a great, thank you to the teams for presenting really helpful information. We did remove an item from July 22nd. So we do have 45 minutes available on July 22nd. We also have the legislative session recap, update on cannabis registration and action plan update scheduled for that study session date. So just pointing that out. That is different than what we would discuss at their council meeting last week.
Yep. Councilmember Keen?
So based on that schedule, I would like to recommend we move the Sustainability and Resiliency Community Work Plan up to July so that we could act quicker on that. By consensus, I think we could do that?
Yes, for sure. That's what I had wanted at the council meeting. I was hoping we could slam dunk it right away. So.
I think there are some other factors besides just study session availability. So maybe if staff want to weigh in, if that's feasible or not. So we're going to pull together some highlights as well.
Thank you, Council President Carlson. We could make July 22nd work. There were, there are some deadlines with some other grant funding obligations that we have to comply with. But I think what we'd like to do, though, is go through the plan, look at, identify ones that are either already complete or maybe perhaps are dated because they refer to the Energy Commission, and now we have a Sustainability and Resiliency Commission, and have a conversation with RPU and better understand some that might have implications to their charter, that we would want to maybe flag those for the council. But we can make July 22nd work.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will close out the study session and then moving on our special meeting here. Everybody has the agenda and the item attached. Clerk, do we need to do a formal pledge of allegiance? Okay. Would the clerk's office please call the roll to start the meeting of City Council's Special Meeting, June 24th, 2024?
Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Can I get a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
Move to approve the order of agenda, second?
All right. Any discussion? One favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. So we're moving on to our one item, which was under Reports and Recommendations, the Rochester Public Music Fourth Fest, Independence Day Celebration, Community Festival. And Clerk Geisler is here to talk us through.
Thanks, Council President, Council President, Mayor Norton, councilmembers. This is pretty straightforward. We're just here tonight. Their application was completed, and they just hadn't turned it in to us. And so it was in our inbox this morning, and I just don't think they realized that we, A, didn't have a council meeting, or that this was an item that still needed to go to council after we did our administrative approvals. And so here we are. We were lucky that this was already happening today. We did not want to bring it into the study session. So Allison and I decided to just call a special so we could get this approved, so we weren't in conflict with any of Minnesota State liquor regulations. Because community festivals allow for on-sale liquor licensees to Because community festivals allow for on-sale liquor licensees to have, you know, a card or a tent or whatever and be able to sell liquor without having to get other extra special licensing. And that's the main factor of this and us wanting to make sure that we get it approved in the right order.
Questions? Councilmember Keen?
I appreciate the explanation of special handling here. But in fact, we are doing special handling for a city department through the city clerk's office. Would we extend the same courtesy to an outside group or how would we?
Sure. This all just kind of luckily lined up nicely. If we had a group that came in and we, we would go to whatever extraordinary circumstance was within our power
Okay.
to get it done.
Thank you.
And I will attest to that because I know there have been questions about approving certain events in the past and the clerk's office has been really supportive of figuring out the best way to make that happen in timely fashion. So thank you. Other discussion?
So based on that, I'd like to move to adopt a resolution approving the special event permit application for the Rochester Public Music Fourth Fest Independence Day Celebration and declaring the event a community festival.
Second. All right, Councilmember Keen?
No, nothing to add. Again, I do consider this one-off processing, I think we have to protect from these things happening.
And if I may, just, Council President, Councilmember Keen, I would also add too that even if it were an outside event, especially if it were of this magnitude and it had just been something, getting this application in and following through the cracks of their planning, we would definitely be working to get it done because this would just be too much planning to cancel in a week, regardless of who was planning it. So.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay? Thank you, Clerk Geisler. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn? All in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.